110 miles.
Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So Monday they called me that she had to be up there Monday night.
To what do we owe the honor, sir? You slumming?
I am, I am three months early. I watched a couple of videos.
Look what the cat drug is. How you?
I'm fine, I'm fine.
Look at little more smell since you left all this pressure.
Lost a little bit of weight.
You lost all this pressure.
Well, I wouldn't intend to come here doing a honeymoon. I wouldn't, I didn't plan on coming here to, to drill.
But it's March, what's your excuse? We're glad to see you, whatever your reason.
Thanks, thank you.
Not that we would keep you or her company.
No, never, no, 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 I would never do that to, to Randy.
No, because everything I ever said is, is still, no, it's written. You know, I've got 4,000 pages that the town has already written for everything that, that went on. So I don't, I do not have to say anything.
No, you don't. No, you don't. It's coming out. That's our prayer, it's gonna come out. Whatever's done in the dark is gonna come in. We're just waiting.
Hello, sir. I'm coming to get them. You want to sign before I take it? Public comment?
I'll pass.
You sure?
No, I'm not sure of a guy. I need all the help I can. But I'm gonna pass.
Okay.
Good evening, good evening. The time is 6 o'clock PM. This meeting of your Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order. Buenas noches, bienvenidos. Esta reunión del Congreso Municipal de Pontiac ha comenzado ahora. Nos reunimos aquí esta noche para tomar decisiones juntos para mejorar nuestra cuidad. Now we welcome Bishop Antonio Gibson to deliver the invocation this evening from New Experience Church of Christ. Bishop Gibson.
For God be the glory. Father God, we come when I bow down heads and our hearts lifted to you, Lord God. First of all, saying thank you for our life, our health, and our strength. A portion of our health and strength, Lord God. Clothing our right mind, God, active as our limbs. We say thank you. We thank you for our Savior, Father God, that you gave us. Father God, that he would be a ransom for many. Father God, I bow in humble submission, oh God, asking this evening, Father God, that you bless the city of Pontiac like never before, oh God. Rain your Spirit down on this city, Father God, that would help those of downtrodden and lift up those of carrying burdens, oh God. We ask, oh God, right now, that you look upon this city in a special manner, God, to remove all this senseless violence, Father God. You said according to your word, Father God, that the effects of fervent prayer of the righteous avail much. Father God, the righteous are standing and praying all across the length and breadth of this city, Father God. Asking that the violence be curbed, be moved, oh God. We ask, oh Father God, to move in the, on the hearts of mankind, that they be put to shame, oh God, and confounded, that seeketh the hurt of our citizens of the city of Pontiac. Now, Father God, we ask that you get it in our government business today, oh God. Allow them to know, Father God, that the government is upon your shoulders. Let them look to you, Father God, for help, oh God. Let them know, God, that it is you that calls them to get up this morning, not their alarm clocks, Father God. Touch their heart in such a way, God, that they'll come together in unity, that this city shall be unified from the northeast, west, and south of this city, God. And not only the city of Pontiac, all the cities that encompass Oakland County, Father God. And let all our leaders, God, look to you, God, which is our help. And then, God, I ask right now, in the name of Jesus, that you lift up the bowed down head of the woman who lost her seven-year-old daughter this week. The senseless violence, oh God. And not only her, God, all those that have been hurt from the shameless violence that has plagued this city. Right now, in the name of Jesus, we bind the hand of the enemy, tell him that he has to flee from this city, that the righteous shall avail much. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, that is all saying, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Bishop Gibson. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. We're going to read the names of those that our community has lost, and it will be followed by a moment of silence. Dorothy Byrd Holloway, aged 100, mother of former Mayor Deirdre Waterman. Wanda Bennett. Willie Cato. Jerome Clark. William Dink Dinkins Jr. Malachi Michael Dixon. Deborah Foster. Mary Parker. Royce Rice. And young Ms. Jackson, just seven years old. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. You, of course, may be seated. Roll call, Clerk Randison.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson. Parker.
Here.
Present.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a call.
Quorum being established. Is there a motion to excuse Councilman Brett Nicholson for personal reasons?
I make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington. He's out of the state on a work conference, so we give him our best, but he'll be joining us next week, of course. Hearing no further discussion on the motion to excuse Councilman Nicholson for personal reasons. Roll call, Clerk Randison.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six to zero, President.
That motion carries. Now we're at motion. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman, to adopt the agenda this evening. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add a discussion item before resolutions and after agenda address?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Violent crime prevention strategies would be that discussion item?
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by James. Any discussion on that motion to amend the agenda? Hearing no discussion. Roll call on that amendment, adding that discussion item for violent crime prevention strategies. Roll call on the amendment, Clerk Randison.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Six to zero.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add a first reading of an ordinance as it relates to the GERS?
Make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington. And just since it's now a motion before us. Mayor Grimald, this is still something that we actively want to do for a first reading, not for ultimate adoption, but to start the clock on ordinances due to the time sensitivity and it being something that's just come to us. And if you get the opportunity, if you have it before us, you can read the formal title of that ordinance. I just don't have it in my packet at the top.
Sounds great, thank you. You want me to read the formal title of the ordinance now?
If you have it handy, sure.
Yep, and I do. It is "An Ordinance to Amend the City of Pontiac General Employees Retirement System to Clarify Asset Distribution of the Excess Assets Upon Termination."
All right, so that's the motion to amend the agenda. We'll elaborate further if that amendment carries and once we get to that part of the agenda. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on the amendment to the agenda, Clerk Randison.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Six to zero.
That motion carries. Are there any other changes, corrections, amendments for the agenda before us as amended? Hearing no further discussion or amendments. Roll call on adoption of this evening's agenda as amended, Clerk Randison.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Six to zero.
That motion carries. We'll proceed with this evening's agenda as adopted. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Support.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. Not a debatable motion, it's essentially adopting last week's council meeting minutes. Roll call, Clerk Randison.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Six to zero.
That motion carries. We're now at special presentations. We have one this evening. I want to turn it over to the administration for the setup.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We are honored to be joined this evening by the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. And in particular, by Elizabeth King, who's with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the MEDC. Welcome, Ms. King.
Thank you.
Feel free to move the microphone or claim it, yep.
Awesome, thank you. So hello, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening, and a special thanks to Vern for getting me on the agenda. My name is Elizabeth King. I'm a Senior Redevelopment Ready Communities Planner for Region 10, which is Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb. And I work with about 50 communities in Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb. And tonight, I'm going to give you an overview of the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. But before we do that, let's just talk real quick about how the Michigan Economic Development Corporation does economic development in the state of Michigan. We do that through partnerships with about 40-plus local economic development organizations, and even more numerous partnerships with other state, local, and federal partners. And we, we bring resources and tools to help municipalities and businesses. There are three main divisions at the MEDC. There's the Marketing and Promotions Division, which I'm sure you're all familiar with through our Pure Michigan campaign. There's the Business Development Division, which primarily focuses on attracting large job, or large business developments and attracting jobs. And then there's the Community Development Division, which is what today's presentation is going to focus on, because the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program lives under the Community Development Division. So the MEDC's Community Development Tools primarily focus on creating attractive, vibrant, and resilient downtowns. So our tools are focused on developing vibrant places, real estate development for multi-story mixed-use buildings. We have a small business team that works directly with municipalities and small business owners to get them resources. We have the Redevelopment Ready Communities Team, which does technical assistance. And we also have our Redevelopment Services Team, which is a benefit of becoming certified in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. A key component of the MEDC's economic development strategy and most local economic development strategies is the Business Talent Place Connection. Talent wants, talent wants place. So talent is trying to go to nice, vibrant cities. And nowadays, more so than ever, people are picking where they want to live first and finding a job second, or they're telecommuting. But places, you know, places need business. And no, no city or community is really vibrant without businesses. And businesses are oftentimes some of the top of the reasons why people say they love their town. And as you know, businesses need talent. That's a, that's more apparent than ever. You need talent to grow and be successful. So these are, these are all components of the MEDC's and local economic development strategies. So the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program empowers communities to shape their future by building a foundation of planning, zoning, and economic development best practices and integrating them into their everyday functions. So think of the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program as a transformational economic development toolkit and not a one-and-done checklist. It's just an ongoing, ongoing process. We have our six guiding principles. So communities in our program, we're looking for them to be proactive, collaborative. Our program really focuses on making sure your processes and policies are predictable. It should be community-driven. We're really looking for you to implement your planning, your key planning documents, and not just have them sit on a shelf. And then we're really striving for equitability as well. Currently, there are, I think, 301 communities now in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program across the state. We have 60 certified communities and two communities that have now reached the RRC Essentials status. And I'm working with 50 communities in Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb. So you have a lot of neighbors and partners who are engaged in this program. So like I said, the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program is a comprehensive toolkit. Back in February 2021, with some feedback from our partners, we created two paths for the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. It used to be you had to meet all of the RRC best practices and expectations to become certified. And some of our partners and local stakeholders thought that was maybe a little cumbersome. So we divided the program up into two paths. The RRC Essentials Pathway and the RRC Certified Pathway. And the RRC Essentials Pathway is really about establishing predictability and those essential RRC best practices. It's a truncated set of best practices and expectations that helps make it a little more easy to accomplish. Maybe you don't have as many resources for our smaller communities, or just to help build up that staff capacity. And the Certified Pathway is really the next step forward in helping create that proactive, helping adopt those proactive practices. As you can see, the RRC Essentials Pathway in the green just contains a few less best practices. And the kind of new idea with the two pathways is that you can reach the RRC Essentials path and then continue onward towards certification. Next, please. So here we have the RRC Best Practice Handbook. It's basically our RRC Bible. These are our guiding principles. So each RRC Best Practice, there are five core best practices, and each one has a few different expectations and criteria. So there's the overarching best practice name and its number. There's the overarching criteria, which is the first thing we look at when we're writing an RRC evaluation. And then there are the expectations. And you have to be meeting all of the best practice criteria and expectations to either reach RRC Essentials or RRC Certified Status. Here are basically five to six core best practices. So we go from plans and public engagement, zoning, the development review process, boards and commissions, and economic development and marketing strategies. So Best Practice 1, arguably the most important best practice, really focuses on a community's core planning document. So having that, having your master plan and making sure it is implementable with an implementation section that creates some accountability with those goals, timelines, and responsible parties. Next is making sure you're planning for your downtowns and your corridors. Making sure you're doing capital improvements plans, which, planning for those long-term capital improvements. And then you can use those capital improvements plans to leverage other financial resources in the future. And then it makes sure you're planning for public participation and engagement, because we really do want the program and all the work you're doing to be community-driven. Best Practice 2 focuses on zoning ordinances. So your zoning is the way you implement your key planning documents. You can have the best master plan in the world, and if it doesn't make it into your zoning ordinance, it may not ever be implemented. So with our zoning best practices, we're really looking for a zoning ordinance that facilitates concentrated development. So that's areas of density, those multi-story mixed-use buildings. We're looking for zoning ordinances that encourage and allow housing diversity, flexible parking standards that encourage placemaking, and that encourage the increasingly important green infrastructure. The next best practice is focused on the development review process. So your development review process is, it's not only your internal business process, but it's also something your external stakeholders go through. It's how, it's the process your business, community, and your development community is going to see when they try to develop businesses for you. And so we're looking for that to be streamlined, and that's when that predictability comes in. So this best practice is really focused on making sure your information is clear and transparent on your website. You're doing those conceptual, you're advertising conceptual review meetings. You're tracking your development applications. You have clear payment methods and fee schedules on the website, and also that you have a guide to development, which can help guide people through the process. Best Practice 4 is focused on board and commission recruitment, education, and training. So this one is making sure, really focused on making sure you have a board and commission applications on the website and making sure there's expectations for board and commission members. It's, it's hard to join a board, that is a mystery. So in this one, we're looking for, do you have your appointment processes online? Are there clear upfront expectations? We are also looking for you to create training strategies for your development-related boards and commissions and for yourself. Because those proactive things can help just introduce new ideas and can really help with, I forgot the word, not getting sued, basically. Can't remember the word I'm looking for. The next one is also joint meetings. So really increasing joint meetings between your development-related boards and commissions and getting everyone on the same page, so you're all rowing in the same direction.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
Do you mean, for example, that the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals would potentially have a sort of strategic joint meeting? Or are you thinking also like the City Council and the Planning Commission? What are some best practices you've seen in other communities?
City Council, Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, maybe.
Historic District Commission.
Historic District Commission, maybe even your Main Street districts. And it could be, you know, a more casual joint meeting. It could be a presentation, it could be a training. But it's really just to get everyone on the same page and rowing together. You know, you could review existing planning documents, you could have a speaker in. But it's to encourage collaboration and discussion among the boards and commissions. Break down, shadow those silos, you know? Okay, so Best Practice 5 is a certified-only best practice. So if you are not focusing on reaching certification right away, this one is for, you know, you can always wait a little bit later to focus on this one. But this one is focused on making sure you have a formal economic development strategy. You have a cohesive marketing plan to attract investment and residents and visitors to your city. And it's also about establishing those economic development incentive policies so that when real estate development projects come to you, you know what kind of incentive tools you want to use, and you can kind of weigh the pros and cons of those. So this is kind of the standard RRC process, the six, the six phases or steps. So today, we are both at the decision point and the point of integrating the missing best practices. So we'll really ask you to pass a resolution to acknowledge the baseline report that you have in your packets, saying that you have seen it and you accept the recommendations, and you'd like to proceed with the program. And that's pretty important for just leveraging our technical assistance matching funds and just officially moving forward with the program. The next step really is integrating the missing best practices. So it's completing the recommendations in the city's RRC baseline report. We use a multicolored, green, yellow, and red system to kind of indicate where the city is meeting both the RRC Essentials and RRC Certified Expectations. So right now, Pontiac is meeting 50, 59% of the Essentials Best Practices and 42% of the Certified Best Practices. The city is on the Essentials path right now, and it can switch at any time. But my recommendation is meet all of the, and this is how we've designed the program to work now. It's meet all of the Essentials Best Practices and Expectations, and then focus on that next step of meeting the Certified Expectations. So you can see, there's, there's really a lot you're doing well, where you're meeting the Certified Expectations. There's some where you're just meeting the Essentials. And some of those ones that are more toward the certified-only best practices, you're missing. But once you complete the other ones, you'll be in good shape to proceed. Next slide, please, thank you. So let's talk about what's already in place. You have a pretty excellent zoning ordinance. You're meeting the majority of RRC Certified Best Practices there. You have streamlined approval authority, at least according to your ordinance, where the Planning Commission approves permitted-use site plans and does so without public hearings, which could add unpredictability into the mix. Your boards, your development-related boards and commissions are receiving orientation packets, which is great, really helps with that continuity and preparedness. And you have board and commission bylaws for those development-related boards and commissions, and they're on the website, and those can help set expectations. So let's talk about what's partially there. You have a, an excellent master plan from 2014, but it is overdue for its five-year review and update. According to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, your master plan is at least supposed to be reviewed and/or updated every five years. And for, you have an excellent implementation section in your master plan, but I'm not sure if there's ever been annual implementation reporting on it. And how can you know where you're going if you haven't kept track of where you've been? So to meet the Certified Best Practice Expectations there, there would need to be annual reporting on the implementation section of your master plan. The next kind of big one from Best Practice 1 is that Capital Improvements Plan. So the city has a basics capital, a basic capital improvements fund in the budget, but it's not. it's not the six-year capital improvements plan that the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act calls for. So you would need to work with your department heads to develop that more comprehensive capital improvements plan, and then get that approved and adopted and online. But once you have that, you can really use it to, you know, ask for more funding, grant funding, you could use it to leverage federal funding. And it's not supposed to be the capital budget, it's more of an aspir, it can be more of an aspirational document. It's like, this is everything we need to invest in over the next six to 10 years, and then you can see what makes it in the budget. Next slide, please. The next one that's partially there is the Economic Development Strategy. So Pontiac has a comprehensive economic development strategy from 2015, which includes an excellent, which includes excellent recommendations and meets the core RRC Best Practice Expectations. But again, the only best practice that's missing here is that implementation reporting. Next slide, please. And then, so some currently missing best practices are creating a training strategy for council and also those development-related boards and commissions. This is just proactive training strategy that can help bring some fresh ideas and you don't have to spend a lot of money on training. I really encourage my communities to create training strategies with Quick Sheets or Fact Sheets or just free resources from online. So training doesn't have to be cost prohibitive, but it is, and it can be conducted at existing meetings. So that's a big one. The other outstanding item is that joint meeting we kind of talked about earlier, and then possibly creating those economic development incentive policies. All right, so you might be wondering, what are the benefits of RRC? Well, you get ongoing direct technical assistance and support from the Redevelopment Ready Communities Team. So I can work with your staff to help meet some of those missing RRC best practices for you. We also provide technical assistance matching funds to help meet some of those missing RRC best practices. So maybe you want to update your master plan and include some corridor planning in that master plan. We can provide technical assistance matching funds to help you complete those projects. We also offer special access to possible training events and conferences. You get ongoing prioritization to MEDC's Community Development Financial Tools. And once you reach RRC certification, you can get access to our Redevelopment Services Team, which helps you select and prioritize and advertise your priority redevelopment sites. So some recommendations and next steps. Discuss and then hopefully pass the resolution to proceed with the program if you like and support what you've heard today. You could form an RRC working group to move forward in the program. You know, many hands make light work. You could take our RRC Best Practice Training. We have an online RRC Best Practice Training. And also, every few months, we run an RRC Virtual Academy, which is like a Zoom version of our live best practice training. Then you'll complete all of those missing RRC Essentials best practice. Hopefully, you'll achieve the RRC Essentials designation, and then you can decide if you'd like to proceed forward towards certification. Here are some resources that I kind of already touched on. There's the RRC Online Training. We have our RRC library, so you can see what your neighbors and how our other communities have met the RRC best practices. You're never on your own. We will provide examples and resources all day long to help you meet those missing best practices, technical assistance matching funds, like we already talked about, direct technical assistance, and collaboration with other local, state, and regional partners. So maybe you haven't been able to get ahold of someone in another State Department, we can help make those connections for you. If you're interested in learning more, feel free to visit our website at myplace.org or follow us on any of the social medias. And here's my contact information. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, council, what we'll do is ask questions more directly associated with the presentation. There is a motion that'll be before us with the resolution itself, so if there's discussion that can be pivoted to that point in the agenda, we shall, but otherwise, questions and commentary, Councilwoman Rutherford.
How long does the actual certification take for a city to complete?
It just depends on how fast you do the work. There's no timeline. It's self-directed.
And you said, you stated earlier that funding, we go into a funding, can you elaborate on that some more, please?
Sure. So we offer technical assistance grant funding, up to $20,000 to $30,000. Yeah, is that, is that what you're looking for?
The numbers, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome. And if you go to our website, you'll find a whole page and guidebook on that technical assistance matching funding, so lays out the whole process for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Others that wish to have the floor, Councilwoman James?
I just had one question in regards to the corridor planning, the technical assistance for corridor planning. Should we have the certification before we can qualify for that technical assistance? Could we qualify for it now?
You would need to pass the resolution to proceed, but your staff has already been integrating the missing best practices, which makes you eligible to receive that technical assistance matching funds. And I would probably ask your staff or whoever's working on that technical assistance match funding to do some corridor planning within your master plan, so we could meet that missing best practice at the same time and get the most bang for the technical assistance dollars.
So it could be worked together, we wouldn't have to have the actual master plan updated before we could start that?
I would say no. We would do maybe like a corridor planning or corridor section within the master plan, and that could be part of your master plan update.
Okay. Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? Ms. King, thank you very much for your time, and we'll be delving deeper into the RRC concept at that point in the agenda.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
What I'd like, colleagues, is a motion to suspend the rules in order to reorder some of the items coming before us to make it work better for the audience and for us, where what would come next is recognition of elected officials, then agenda address, then the two council resolutions, then the two discussion items, and then the ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Parker, that we move to suspend the rules to reorder what is otherwise our set agenda order, so that way we can make efficient use of your time and ours. Hearing no discussion, roll call on that motion to suspend the rules. Clerk Grandison.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six to zero.
That motion carries. We are now at recognition of elected officials, and we have the Honorable Brenda Carter, State Representative for Michigan's district that includes the honorable and venerable and beautiful city of Pontiac. Representative Carter, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, President McGinnis, to Mayor Tim Grimaldi, to the entire City Council, to everyone in the audience, and of course, to everyone at home. When I heard the news about Aria, the seven-year-old girl who was killed in our city last Friday, I was completely at a loss for words, and frankly, I still am. In Pontiac, we've seen a dangerous rise in crime, and too many lives have been lost this year to gun violence. This is not a problem, this is not a problem that can't be fixed. I don't understand why children still have to die before we realize that. My heart goes out to Aria's family. We must fix the problem of gun violence in our city together, and I promise I will not stop fighting until we do. We must invest in the safety and education of our children, and that's why I'm proud to vote for the fiscal 2022 school aid budget and make historic investments in our education system. This budget closed the funding gap, invested in early education, and funded special education and mental health by investing a total of $640 million to bring every school district up to the same level of per pupil funding. Increasing per pupil funding in the state by $8,700 per pupil and increase, that increased almost $600 in some school districts. Increasing funding for early childhood education to the same level as our K through 12. Creating more slots so nearly every child can attend a high-quality, affordable preschool. Increasing mandatory special education by $44.5 million to ensure that our students have an opportunity to succeed. And providing $17 million in additional funding for mental health services and wraparound services to address the challenges that our children are facing coming out of this pandemic. This is the first time we've seen this kind of monumental funding in education in Michigan. And while there's still more work to do, we are moving in the right direction. On the legislative side, just briefly, I introduced House Bill 5946 to allow residents to submit their phone number and their email to the Secretary of State and to receive updates from the Secretary of State on where their absentee ballot is along that process. I wrote this bill because I want to make cheating hard for those accessible in Michigan, making, I want, excuse me, I wrote this bill because I want to make cheating hard and voting more accessible in Michigan, unlike some of my colleagues. Just last week, I had to stand in the House of Representatives and explain to my colleagues that the bill that they wanted to pass was actually a form of voter suppression. We have a system in Michigan that works, and we must ensure that it continues to work. And right now, my bills and my colleagues' bills are doing just that. We are protecting our community. I would like to invite everyone to my rescheduled Property Resource Tax Fair. It's going to be held next Tuesday, the 29th, at the Bowen Center from noon until 2:00 PM. I will be joined there by the Oakley County Treasurer's Office, the Department of Insurance and Financial Services, also known as DIFs, the Area of Aging 1B, just to name a few. You do not have to lose your home, you have options, and we're going to provide all the options you need to help you stay in your home. You don't have to lose your home. Council President McGinnis, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity of addressing this honorable body, and now I'm back to Lansing.
Safe travels. Thank you very much. We are now at agenda address. Council President Protem Carrington, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Council Emeritus, Ms. Gloria Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Carrington. The first item I want to mention, if I'm not mistaken, didn't the agenda address go from three minutes to two minutes? Or has it always been two minutes? So you may want to ask that, maybe you can answer that in your closing comments. The second one is the Arts Commission. Did you do any vetting for these people? How did you decide on what, because I see you're going to vote on them tonight? Was it an open process? Some of these people I know, what were the criteria for elected ones that you're going to vote on tonight as far as on the Arts Commission? And these questions, when I ask them, I represent people that ask me to ask certain things. And that's it, those two items. Did the minutes change and the vetting of the Arts Commission? How did you go about that?
All right, thank you.
Hello, I'm Billy Swazer, and I would like to talk about the GERS ordinance. I haven't seen it yet, but I would like you all to take time and make sure you use some patience on that. It's supposed to be some people with some information that want to get it to you so that you can review the information before you act on it. GERS is a trust fund. It is not a fund that can readily move money from one to another place without IRS approval. So we're asking that you wait and get the information. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda address, President McGinnis.
Thank you. And with our previous motion, we are now at the council resolutions. The first is the resolution honoring the life of Alonzo Cash. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington. That is before us. This is somebody that our community has lost, but also has served our community through the city of Pontiac and specifically the Clerk's Office. I want to give the floor now to Clerk Grandison to speak on the life and legacy of Mr. Alonzo Cash.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say from the Clerk's Office, we really extend our deepest sympathy to Mr. Cash's family. He was really a good guy, just so helpful. And without him, we wouldn't have, you know, did so good with our election process, so we just, anything we needed, he was there. He always went above and beyond to help us with our process, and we are really, really going to miss him. Thank you.
Thank you. Others that wish to speak to the resolution before us. On behalf of the entire city of Pontiac, Mayor Grimaldi and his office, and the entire City Council, we extend our deepest condolences to the family of Alonzo Cash, and we take this action in part to celebrate and tribute to the service he provided to our community being a part of the city of Pontiac and our functions, including the administration of free and fair elections for all citizens. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption, Clerk Grandison.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Six to zero.
That motion carries. Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the council resolution celebrating the achievements of humanitarian Ruth Peterson?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington. It's now before us. Want to, there's just so much that Ruth Peterson and her life represents, and oftentimes in the last few decades, it's gone not as noticed, not as known. And so we're really grateful and we're celebrating tonight that expanded knowledge and revisiting of her legacy. Whereas the month of March is National Women's History Month, which recognizes and spreads awareness of the importance of women in the history of the United States, whereas many notable, strong women have helped shape our Pontiac community for the better through the decades, yet their names and their stories have not always been adequately shared or celebrated. Whereas Ms. Ruth Peterson spent five decades giving back to the community and was a renowned humanitarian who devoted herself to helping others in need. Whereas she was a co-founder of Friends in Service Here, acronym of FISH, and their extended chapters, which worked to provide those in need with food and other essential supplies, and established the FISH Hotline to connect those in need with resource providers. Whereas Ms. Peterson was an early force behind the establishment of the Pancake Shelter in Pontiac and the community's Pancake Breakfast that ran for many years, organized the Greater Pontiac Community Resource Manual, and helped establish the Furniture Resource Center in Pontiac. Whereas she was a human relations consultant with the school district of the city of Pontiac and founded the Adopt a Grandparent program at the school district's Frost School, among other initiatives to support Pontiac students, particularly those that dealt with social services and community school programs. Whereas Ms. Peterson was a deacon at Kirk in the Hills Presbyterian Church, taught Bible school and Sunday school for 40 years, served on the church's Women's Association Board, and was a catalyst for many outreach efforts by the congregation to partner with Pontiac organizations and schools to make a positive difference. Whereas she was a board member of the Pontiac YWCA, YMCA of Oakland County, Oakland County Volunteer Bureau, and People to People, and volunteered at Oakland- Volunteer Bureau, and People to People, and volunteered at Oakland County Children's Village and Pontiac General Hospital, where she started the Service with Love program at the hospital. Whereas the city of Pontiac named the Ruth Peterson Senior Community Center to honor her impactful life and celebrate the spirit of volunteerism that she embodied. Whereas Ms. Peterson passed away in 1996 at the age of 78, and in the decades since then, there haven't been as many residents who personally knew her and about her vast legacy of service, and the city did not readily have documentation about her legacy. Whereas city employees Gladys Smith and Linda Simpson, who work at the Ruth Peterson Senior Community Center, worked to research more about her fascinating life. Whereas the Pontiac City Council, at our March 1, 2022 council meeting formally declared March of 2022 as Women's History Month in the city of Pontiac, Michigan, now therefore be it resolved, the Pontiac City Council hereby celebrates the achievements of humanitarian Ruth Peterson and marvels at her many accomplishments. And further resolved, the city council honors the contributions and sacrifices Ms. Peterson made to uplift other Pontiac residents, inspire other women, and help others in need throughout our community. And further resolved, the city council wants her family and friends to know how enduring her impact has been on our community and that her life continues to be celebrated even as the years progress. And further resolved, the city council acknowledges the work done by Ms. Gladys Smith and Ms. Linda Simpson to research the legacy of Ms. Ruth Peterson and to ensure that the Ruth Peterson Senior Community Center undertakes efforts to better share her story and the inspiration behind the center's naming and her honor. And further resolved, we encourage Pontiac residents to learn about Ms. Ruth Peterson, to reflect on her legacy, and keep the spirit of her memory alive. And further resolved, we shall remember her favorite quote that she kept next to her phone and referenced when asked how she was able to make such a positive impact. Quote, "It's amazing how much you can get done when you don't have to worry about who gets the credit." And further resolved, the city council welcomes additional opportunities for us as a community to better acknowledge and celebrate the women of Pontiac who have made such a dynamic difference in our city through the generations. So that is the council's resolution to honor Ms. Ruth Peterson. We anticipate that her daughter was able to join us this evening. Are you in the audience tonight? If you could, please take the podium if you want to offer any reflections. And as she takes the podium, let's give a round of applause to the memory of Ruth Peterson.
Thank you, everyone. I do appreciate that. I know my mother loved the city of Pontiac, as I did, and I would love to see the Pancake Breakfast come back. I'm working personally in a tax firm. I have a tax firm down Telegraph near 12 Mile Road, and so I've been in the community for a long time, and I am endeavoring to start working a little bit more with some nonprofits in Pontiac. I will pledge to do that. And thank you all for being so appreciative, and I really do, it moves me.
Ms. Simpson and/or Ms. Smith, if either of you would like to take the microphone and offer any reflections on behalf of Ruth Peterson Senior Community Center, you don't have to, all right? But a round of applause for the efforts that you took and the sleuthing you did to help us better know, learn, and celebrate the story of Ruth Peterson. I'm grateful that we're able to revive it for another generation to know about those amazing, amazing works that she's done. Any discussion? President Protam Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Actually, someone that moved here probably about 12 years ago, I really didn't know any information about Ruth Peterson, and it's in my district. So I was very excited once I read the resolution to see just how important Ms. Peterson was for the city of Pontiac and her giving of herself all these years. So thank you, thank you, staff, for Ruth Peterson, for the work that you've done on this. And also, it's a pleasure to meet you as well, Ms. Peterson. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing no further discussion on adoption of the resolution, Clerk Grandison.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six to zero.
That motion carries. Thank you again. We're now at discussion items. The first of the two, city's website redesign update. Mayor and Administration, you have the floor.
I'm going to allow Deputy Mayor Stevens to discuss and provide an update regarding the status of the redevelopment of our city's website and where things stand in terms of hiring a firm to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So for the website redesign, we have two firms. We have Revised and Emberly that have made it to the top of our list. We sent them an email asking for further clarification as to exactly what is included in their proposals, and so we should have information back from that this week, and we hope to actually have a formal recommendation of one of the two of them for you at your next council meeting.
Understood. Those that wish to have the floor, Councilwoman Rutherford?
Which of the two finalists are located in Pontiac?
Neither of the two finalists are located in Pontiac.
How many firms submitted for that application from Pontiac?
One.
Can you elaborate on why they weren't chosen?
Absolutely. When we went through the tabulation of the sheets, they were excessively beyond the scope of pricing of all of the other firms, and they were not excessively above as far as value added.
Okay. You answered.
Others that wish to have the floor? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman James.
Yes, I just like, do you have any kind of an estimate on when you think we will see this work completed so that we can actually have a website that we can be proud of?
Yes. With both respondents, I believe it was approximately a four-month process.
Okay.
And actually, you know, that timeframe is dependent on us getting back to them, so they'll provide mockups, and then we have to say yes, no, and provide them back with information. So it could be shorter based on our responses.
Mayor Grimald?
And just to be clear, the scope of work that we're talking about, I believe, is not just a one-time update of the website, which will itself take some time, but it's also an ongoing maintenance of that website so that we can make sure that it's kept in appropriate condition, that updates are timely posted to the website, that design changes can be made as necessary so that it's not just a situation of, well, three or four months and they're done, and then the website becomes out of date over time. We want to make sure that we're putting in place a website that the city can be proud of and making sure that it remains a website that the city can be proud of and that remains a website that effectively communicates information to the city. As I think everyone knows here, the website has not been satisfactory for many, many years now, and it's long past time for us to change that. And as you put it so eloquently, Councilwoman James, make sure that we have a city website that we can be proud of and that even more importantly, accurately and adequately and timely communicates information to the entire community.
Others that wish to have the floor? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you did raise your hand previously. Councilman Goodman?
I do just want to point out that I have been a part of the process with the administration in picking the, who's going to be working on the website. And luckily, it's been a rather straightforward and easy process between the mayor's administration as well as the staff members who have helped to do this. So I, one, commend the administration so gratefully for bringing me into this, chairing that committee, but also, you know, due to the knowledge expertise that I do have to help bring it to the administration and make this an overall good process for everyone. So I thank you so much for that.
And just to reiterate what the councilmen said, we really appreciate your expertise in being able to help us go through all of the jargon in some of those responses.
Others that wish to have the floor? With that, speaker's list exhausted, that concludes that discussion item. We are now at the next discussion item, violent crime prevention strategies. Mayor Grimald, Administration, you initially have the floor in this discussion.
Thank you. We have known for far too long that we have an epidemic of violence here in the city of Pontiac, and that's certainly been true in the past several months, where we've had far too many homicides, and where that frequency of homicides has actually been higher than past year, or is on pace at least to outpace last year's number of homicides. That alone has been heartbreaking, but nothing has been more heart-wrenching during all my years of elected service than losing the seven-year-old girl on Friday to completely senseless, senseless violence perpetrated by cowards who engaged in a drive-by shooting. And all violence risks hurting innocent bystanders, but drive-by shootings in particular are infamous for resulting in the deaths of innocent bystanders, and there's nobody more innocent than a seven-year-old girl. And so while we have understood the importance of addressing and reducing violence, particularly gun violence, but all forms of violence in the community, the tragedy of Friday really underscores the urgency of that. And want to talk about a couple of immediate steps towards really redoubling our efforts to urgently take concrete steps towards reducing violence in the community. As a preliminary matter, we are convening a town hall tomorrow evening that will certainly allow the community to be heard, most importantly, but also will start to talk about actual concrete steps to reduce this epidemic of violence that we've seen. Certainly, a law enforcement response is necessary and important, but as I think all of us know, a law enforcement response alone is not enough to prevent violence moving forward. In fact, just in the past week or two, and as I announced at last week's council meeting, the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, together with the Federal Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, had arrested 19 local gang members from the R Block and H Block organizations. And certainly, that kind of law enforcement response is important. But as Friday's tragedy demonstrated, in all two powerful terms, that law enforcement approach of arrests will not itself reduce violence. And as a result, the town hall tomorrow is not just going to be an opportunity for the community to be heard, which is important, it's essential. It's not just a way for all of us collectively to set community norms and say emphatically that violence is not acceptable, that we're not going to act like violence is an appropriate day-to-day occurrence here or something that we're going to accept or live with, but that we're going to fight back against violence in the community. So it's important that we say that emphatically through tomorrow night's event, but it's also important that we talk very directly about approaches that will prevent violence from occurring in the first place. And tomorrow's event is going to feature three organizations that are doing some of that important work to try to reduce violence from occurring in the first place. One of those organizations is Delia Sharp's Identify Your Dream Foundation. Another is Norbert Burroughs' I Am the Village Foundation. And the third is Rahim Harris's Pontiac Universal Crimes. Those three organizations are going to have a platform tomorrow. They're going to specifically speak about the work that they've been doing in the community and will continue to do and actually start some additional programs. So I encourage everyone who's available and can make it to be there tomorrow evening. That event is going to occur from 6:00 to 7:30 PM tomorrow evening. It's going to be at the Bowen Center, and it's going to be facilitated by our Council President Protam, William Carrington, in partnership with Tamika Ramsey, who, as many of you know, is a longtime community activist. So again, tomorrow's event is important, but it's even more important that we actually see follow-through and follow-up action. We've had a lot of town halls in our city. We've had a lot of marches for peace in our city over many, many years, and all too often they have not been followed through on with actual concrete action. And so it's really important that we start a process, and we've been talking about this in recent weeks internally with our administration, and I alluded to it at a council meeting, to create an anti-violence commission. And that commission, again, needs to be very inclusive of people from all walks of life here in the community, not just law enforcement, but actually much more so, community activists, everyday people, mothers, grandmothers, grandparents, people who are living this day in and day out and can help us collectively really reduce the impact on our community. And I know that Councilwoman James shares my passion for the need to establish this commission. I've been in touch with Councilwoman James. I've been in touch with Council President McGinnis and Council President Protam Carrington over the weekend, as well as Pastor Parker and others. And we all agree on the absolute urgency of appointing this commission and getting to work now. And so, working with council, I'm going to make some decisions about who should serve on this commission. Councilwoman James and I have already started talking about that in depth. I'm going to continue talking with other council people in the next day so that we can come to consensus about who's best to serve on this to really advance what all of us in this community want and believe in, which is a reduction in this senseless violence. Enough is enough. We certainly want to make sure that those responsible for Friday's tragedy are held accountable and responsible for their actions, and I'm confident that law enforcement will ensure that that happens because we're not going to tolerate this kind of senseless violence perpetrated by cowards. But it's even more important that we prevent these senseless tragedies from occurring in the future, and that's why the work of this commission is so important and that there be no mistake. There's no simple answer. There's no one silver bullet. If there were, we wouldn't see violence, not just here in Pontiac, but across the country and across the world. But there are proven strategies that we can employ to reduce the frequency of violence and the intensity of violence, and that's what this commission will be focused on. I'm looking forward to working with our partners on city council and our community partners to make sure that we tackle this, make this our highest priority to reduce this sort of nonsense, this senseless violence, and to make sure that no more mothers are left crying and left grieving because of events like this. I know that our entire city mourns right now for the seven-year-old girl who was murdered and all of her family and friends, and we've got to make sure that there are less events in the future that have this kind of tragic outcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Others that wish to have the floor? Councilwoman James?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the mayor for taking the initiative and recognizing the fact that we have to do more to be able to address the violence that's taking place in our city. It's not pretty, but it's something that we have to step up to, to address. And I would just add, from what he said, that we've got to have a sense of urgency about what we're doing. It can't take the next 12 months. It has to be something that we are looking at very hard. We have to have a sense of urgency about what we're going to do about the violence in our community. And secondly, I would add that what we do needs to be data-driven. We need to ask the five whys of, why is this happening? Why are we having so much violence? And actually, look at the data, do the deep dives, do the due diligence, as one of our former council persons used to use that word all the time. But we need to use our due diligence to understand what's happening. But we need to use our due diligence to understand what's happening in our city and come up with the kinds of solutions that's going to, as the mayor said, either reduce or, you know, eliminate this kind of violence. So I am very, very happy that the council, that the mayor, that we are all united in seeing something done. You know, we've talked about it a lot, but at this point, this council wants to see something done about it. And this administration wants to see something done about it. And I'm very pleased that we want to work together to do this. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor?
I want to emphasize that every Pontiac resident in every Pontiac neighborhood deserves to be safe. Safe in your home, safe in your driveway, safe in your place of worship, safe in your place of business, safe in a park or in a public space. That is period, full stop, end of sentence. That is something that every single Pontiac resident and every single Pontiac visitor wants, and it's everything, it's something that all of us deserve, and that we recognize that fully. We recognize that this must be comprehensive. A number of steps have already been taken in recent months. And as the mayor alluded to, we were seeing a lot of positive results in terms of implementation of strategies that were effective. The previous council voted to expand and update the contract with the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, who provides policing services for our community, that dramatically expanded community policing, which has begun to be implemented, which we are, through our subcommittee and through the mayor's office, reviewing the hard data to see the results that that's generating. Other new technologies have been integrated in and discussed that can also be brought on board, but that's just one small fraction of the picture. So we, as the council, stand in full partnership, ready, mayor, to strategize, deliberate, and then implement, because action is required. And it is so somberly tragic that it would have to be the robbing of innocence of a seven-year-old, that would have to be that turning point, but the residents, the residents were already at that turning point. And this is just, the outrage and shock has really catapulted it even more into our consciousness. Any other council members that wish to have the floor?
I think I will.
Councilman Parker?
Thank you, President. You know, as I've heard all the things said, and certainly our hearts go out to the both of these families, because not only is the family that lost their member grieving, but the family that caused the accident, which drive-bys and all that, that's a family that's going to be affected as well. But I truly believe that at some point, this community needs to decide whether it wants to be a silent community or a safe community. Moral outrage won't get it done anymore. Anger won't get it done anymore. Town halls won't get it done anymore. We're just going to have to say, if we see something, say something, get folks off the street that we know shouldn't be on the streets, and make our communities safe. We've had far too many gun violence. We've been dealing with this, even the past council dealt with this and did some things that they thought would be helpful. How long is Pontiac going to say it's okay, except for the week or so that we have moral outrage, and then we go back to business as usual? Until we decide that we want the city to change, it's not going to change. People will continue to do what you let them get away with until you stop them from getting away with it.
That's right.
It's just that simple. We know it. There's not much that goes on in our community that somebody don't know about.
Facts.
Somebody has seen it, somebody knows it, they just need to share it and tell it. If you're afraid, there are some anonymous numbers that you could use, that you can talk about, that you can call the anonymous numbers, nobody will know. There's even some that will give you a reward for telling. Tell somebody. Nothing happens in a vacuum. Everybody's going to see something or saw something and can tell it. We need to get, be collectively involved and active in saying, we either want a silent community or we want a safe community. It's our choice. Thank you, brother President.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? Councilwoman Rutherford?
So, in 2011, before I became an elected official, I snitched on a murderer. I was bullied in the hood because I did it, but I knew it was going to be a life-altering decision because I knew my homeboy, Aunt Banks, deserved better. I say that because I'm not ashamed of it. It changed my life, and it made me understand the power of what it takes to actually be about it and not just all talk. At the end of the day, the citizens do want to come talk. They do want to admit, they do want to snitch, but they, excuse me, not snitch, they want to tell, as I say, because snitching is only if you enter the streets, telling is if it's the truth, and the truth is the truth. At the end of the day, it takes somebody to be an example. So if I have to keep telling the story over and over again, a murderer is in jail for 50 years, read it, facts, not figures, because at the end of the day, it wasn't about me, it was about my community, we have to be bold enough to say, guess what, if I could tell, so can you. That's all I wanted to say. So we're not just talking about it, we're doing it. Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? That concludes this discussion item, although we know it'll be revisited frequently. We now are at ordinance, first reading of the ordinance. Clerk Grandison, are you in a position where you can read the title of the ordinance or give us a sense of it?
I didn't receive it, sir.
Okay. Mayor Grimal, if you could, please share for the community. This is a first reading. We have an opportunity to revise it and hone it. You have the floor.
Absolutely. So let me begin with what I'll try to make sure is a very concise summary of why we're bringing this forward. As I think most of you are aware, certainly those who have been watching recent city council meetings are aware, there's been a longstanding standoff or dispute between the VIBA, on the one hand, which is a fund that's responsible for funding retiree healthcare, and GERS, which is the pension system for general city of Pontiac retirees. And a settlement agreement was reached between the city of Pontiac and a class action of plaintiffs, the City of Pontiac Retirees Employees Association, CIPRIA, back in 17 or 18. And under that agreement, a certain amount of money was supposed to be transferred from GERS, from the pension system, to the VIBA to ensure that there was adequate funding of retiree healthcare moving forward. Much of those funds have been transferred from GERS to the VIBA. Like I said at the outset, there's now this standoff between the VIBA and the CIPRIA plaintiffs, on the one hand, and GERS, on the other, over how much additional funding needs to be transferred and when it needs to be transferred. I was part of a settlement discussion just this morning between the parties to see if we could bridge that divide and finally bring some closure to this longstanding issue and dispute. What the parties discussed this morning, oh, let me add one important point here, which is that under IRS guidelines, and the IRS had to approve the transfer of GERS assets, pension assets, to the VIBA to fund retiree healthcare moving forward. And under IRS guidelines, those funds are required to be transferred by March 31st of this year. And because of this standoff and this dispute between VIBA and GERS, all of those assets have not been transferred. But one of the pension entities under IRS guidelines needs to disperse all of the funds currently within its fund by March 31st, or else it will likely run afoul of these IRS guidelines. Because there's this dispute over where those funds should go, whether they should, some of them should remain in a pension fund, or whether they should all go to the VIBA for retiree healthcare, there's a risk that that March 31st IRS deadline will not be reached. What we discussed at this morning's meeting of all the interested parties, GERS, the VIBA, CIPRIA, and the city, is while we continue to talk through how best to resolve this, in order to not break this March 31st deadline, let's have the disputed amount of money transferred into what essentially is an escrow account, so that we can comply with the IRS requirement that those funds not be held in this one pension fund while allowing the parties to work out a final agreement over what to do with these funds. We're not asking city council to vote tonight. A vote would not be required until next Tuesday. And any vote, by the way, would be contingent on an agreement involving GERS, the VIBA, CIPRIA, and the city. So there's no need to vote tonight. In fact, it wouldn't make sense to vote tonight because GERS would have to sign off on any agreement as part of the transfer of these funds into the escrow. But we wanted to very quickly hurry and bring this tonight because any changes to city ordinance require two readings. And if, in fact, the parties agree to transfer funds into this escrow account before March 31st, it'll be required to pass this ordinance to facilitate that at next week's March 29th meeting. And so that's why we brought it for first reading tonight. All the parties are aware of us doing that. Cynthia Billings, the attorney for GERS, is aware of it. The attorneys for the other entities are aware of it. Sheldon Albertson, the chair of GERS, is aware of this. And all of this, again, is contingent on the relevant parties agreeing before next Tuesday. But in the event that agreement happens, we wanted to bring it tonight for first reading so that if the parties agree, we can get it taken care of next Tuesday. And I see that Council President has stepped out. Council President Pro Tem, would you like me to read the ordinance? Is that necessary, to actually read it out loud? Deputy clerk, is that required?
Yes, I would say, actually, we need to make a motion first so we can have this.
Fair enough.
So please go ahead and read the ordinance for us.
I have the ordinance as it will be amended. So there are aspects of this that are already in an ordinance that was passed as part of the settlement agreement, but I'm going to read the full ordinance, including both previous sections that are already law, as well as proposed amendments.
Mr. Pro Tem?
Excuse me? Yes.
As amended, so you don't have to read the whole ordinance.
Oh, I don't?
Okay.
I'm asking that question.
No, just amended part that we plan to amend.
Just the amended part. I don't know that I actually have that on me, to be honest with you.
So Deputy clerk, can we make a motion?
I can quickly go and print it off.
Well, that's what the president is doing right now for.
Oh, okay.
But we still need to have a motion before we can discuss.
Understood.
The particular amended.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by, it's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford. Could I get a second?
A second.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
What are we voting on?
Yes.
The GERS.
Thank you.
There is a lot of moving parts right now?
Definitely, I definitely agree.
Yep.
Basically, what we want to do is make a motion so we can amend the ordinance for the GERS ordinance for next week. We're not going to vote tonight, we just want to be able to discuss it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Support.
Okay, so I have a motion to amend the GERS ordinance in support. At this time, can we have a discussion? Any discussion? Yes.
I mean, what I'm going to say is that I'm happy that there is obviously a second reading after this because, to Ms. Blazer's point, there is information I think is very important for all of us to know. So I think, you know, again, I am very happy that we have that in place because there is, again, a lot of moving parts that I think we should be aware of before we make this actual decision.
I definitely agree, officer. So at this time, can we, I want to open up for discussion? If it's possible, any council have any discussion? Yes.
I think there's probably a point of order in place, that I don't think that we have enough to discuss, because I think there's so many moving parts here, and everybody was in a portion of the meetings, and so we don't know what we, what we're supposed to be discussing in that the resolution, as the change, has not been read. There is some trust fund money that's there, there's some other little monies that's there, there's a settlement agreement that's there, and there's a whole lot of moving parts that a lot of us have not been privy to and don't know which way we're going. And so for us to sit here and say we can discuss it would be somewhat an affront to those who have been discussing it. So I would say that perhaps, in understanding that it needs to be and should be voted on, that we need better information on exactly what it is that is trying to take place and what it is that you're asking this council to approve.
Pro Tem?
Oh, yes, Attorney Sharp.
So, again, to piggyback off of what the mayor said, I believe that the point is really to preserve, because the parties have come together with something. It hasn't been completely agreed upon as of yet, but because this deadline is looming, today would just be a first reading of the proposed ordinance. So it's not like it's in stone, it would just be a first reading. So that would give the parties an opportunity between now and next week to come to some resolution and approach council to let them know, to let you guys know if they're in agreement or not. But in order to preserve this time, you have to kind of agree to the first reading, and then so the clerk can also publish, because it's an ordinance amendment. But the mayor can, in fact, he does, I believe, have the document where he can indicate to you guys what the proposed amendments would be to the ordinance. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Grimal. And also, just for this community, this did come at the last minute, so I definitely apologize for the council. It came actually 30 minutes before we even came in here, so I do understand the council's concern. So at this time, Mayor Grimal, can you please read the amended?
And I want to echo your comments, Council President Pro Tem. It came at the last minute because we have this meeting this morning where this idea was proposed, and that idea only works, again, if the parties agree, but also if we pass an amended ordinance next Tuesday. And that's, again, because of this IRS deadline and this standoff that's existed between GERS and the VIBA for some time. So as I think council is aware, this has not been our past practice as an administration. We try to give you as much heads up as possible. I do want to underscore, though, that we're not asking for a vote on the substance of this tonight. I would think about this to underscore Ms. Sharp's point, in the same vein as we talk about a notice of a budget amendment, which is, we publish a notice of it because we're considering it and we're asking the community for feedback, but we're not actually voting on the budget amendment when we approve the notice of the budget amendment. We're simply getting the ball rolling to allow council to make a decision, one way or the other, at a future date. And so the title of the ordinance, again, is "An Ordinance to Amend the City of Pontiac General Employees Retirement System to Clarify Asset Distribution of the Excess Assets Upon Termination." And the changes to the proposed ordinance include an amendment to Section 1, Paragraph B, Subsection 2, that prefaces the paragraph by saying, "except as modified by Paragraph 3 below," comma, and then adds in this Paragraph 3 that I will read. "The excess assets remaining within the accounts of the retirement system on March 30th, 2022, March 30th, 2022 account balance shall be transferred on March 30th, 2022 as follows: Subsection 1, the lesser of either $65 million or the March 30th, 2022 account balance shall be transferred to an account established by the city for the purpose of holding funds in escrow until the parties to the settlement agreement agree in writing as to the final allocation thereof. And 2, to the extent the March 30th, 2022 account balance exceeds $65 million, the sum of money exceeding $65 million shall be transferred to the re-established general employees retirement system." And that is the sum total of the proposed...
Others that wish to have the floor?
Others that wish to have the floor? Hearing no further discussion. Yes.
President McGinnis, we probably want to make sure that we have that motion and the second correct.
Well, was there a motion by Rutherford, seconded by James to, that's Kirk Grandison? Okay, so we, it's properly moved and seconded, and this is the first reading, so we aren't moving into voting procedures. We'll have two readings for an ordinance. This just starts the cycle for us. Mayor Grimal.
Well, I want to make sure I'm not out of order if you've already put a motion on the table to postpone, but I did just have a couple of.
No, 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 it wasn't postponed.
It wasn't, okay.
No.
So I did just want to say that, yes, this is, as Ms. Blazer put it, trust money that, based on the law and the IRS ruling, can only be used for one of two purposes, either retiree healthcare or for pensions. And so, but it's got to be used for the purposes of retirees. Now, that could include, at this stage, some monthly stipend. I know there's been a lot of discussion about that. And so any disbursement, if the parties agree to put this money in escrow, any disbursement would have to be for one of those purposes. We all agree on that. The reason why this is important is that once, number one, we want to make sure that we're not violating that IRS deadline. So we've got to get it out of the one pension fund, commonly known as the old GERS, before March 31st. And number two, if it were all transferred to the VIBA, then none of those funds could ever be used for pension purposes again or for any monthly stipend again. So that's why it's not as simple as just transferring it to the VIBA because once the funds go to the VIBA, they can only be used for retiree healthcare. There's no turning back when it comes to the funds transferred to the VIBA. And that's why we want to make sure we get this right. We want to make sure that the parties agree on how this funding is to be used so that we make sure certainly the VIBA has enough assets to provide retiree healthcare, but we also, assuming that that's taken care of, we'd like to leave as much in the pension system as possible to make sure the pensions are fully funded and, if possible, that we might be able to provide some monthly stipend moving forward.
Others that wish to have the floor? Is there a motion to postpone?
I've got one.
Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
I realize that we're all just, you know, touching base with this, but am I clear in, in understanding that the, there is a deadline here, the March 31st, that the money has to come out of the GERS?
Exactly.
But.
Out of GERS.
Out of GERS.
Yep.
But I think if I understand clearly, it, you're putting it into the escrow because there, there is not a real deadline on when it needs to go to the VIBA. So in other words, that's what's confusing me.
Yep.
Does the VIBA have to take place on March 31st as well? Whatever transfer to VIBA, does that have to be done by March 31st as well?
It does not. So your impression is exactly right.
Okay, all right.
So there, you know, and I tried to keep.
Please, order, order in the chambers, please.
This is obviously a very complicated topic for all of us, including me. So I tried to sort of keep it as simple as possible in my description, but there are really three funds that are relevant here. There's the, the longstanding pension fund, commonly known as the old GERS. There's a newly formed pension fund, commonly known as the new GERS. And then there's the VIBA fund that's responsible for funding retiree healthcare. And the, as part of the settlement agreement that was reached between the city and the CIPRIA retiree plaintiffs back in 2018 is when it was actually inked, the money has to be transferred out of the old GERS, some of which will go to the new GERS, some of which will go to the VIBA. And the old GERS was required to dissolve itself. That dissolution was initiated last March 31st, March 31st of 2021. And IRS guidelines say that any dissolving pension fund has to get rid of all of its assets within one year of its dissolution. That's why the deadline for the old GERS to get rid of its assets is March 31st of this year, 2022. But there is no deadline under those IRS regulations as to when those funds need to get into the VIBA or the new GERS. And that's why this would allow those funds to leave the old GERS by that IRS deadline and then sit in this set aside fund until the VIBA and the GERS and other parties can come to some reasonable understanding. And so, again, those details of the escrow agreement have to be worked out, but the escrow agreement will presumably provide that some parties, either all four of the parties I've been talking about, or some portion of those parties, will have to agree
Mr. Maxi, they're trying to get your attention, it's your phone going off.
Before those funds are dispersed from that escrow account. But you hit it, you hit the nail on the head, Councilwoman James.
President Protem Carrington, you have the floor.
Mayor Grimal, thank you for that clarification. And I think some of the issue of this whole situation is that it's ongoing dispute that continues to confuse from both sides. And someone that this is new to, I can only speak for myself, and I've tried, I'm trying
Order in the chambers.
And I'm trying to.
President Protem has the floor.
And I'm trying to make sure that this council makes the right decision. And the confusion is that everybody has their own attorneys, and it starts to get confusing when all attorneys are speaking. And so from a standpoint of neutrality, which I would love to see all our retirees get everything they deserve because they deserve it, but this process is very complicated because if I show you my email box, I got retirees emailing me, I got those from the VIBA, I got those from the GERS, and it really gets hard to understand exactly which way that we should proceed as a council, okay? So I just want this community to understand that, is that we are trying to make the proper and right decision that benefits our retirees. Thank you.
Others that wish to be recognized? Is there a motion to postpone for one week?
Moved by Carrington.
Mr. President?
It's not postponed.
It's just the first reading, you don't have to postpone.
Okay. Any objection to that? Reading one has been read. So Mayor Grimal.
Just a procedural question for the clerk's office and perhaps for Ms. Sharp, too, based on what Deputy Clerk Grandison and Ms. Sharp have mentioned, which is, do we need to post notice or advertise in some way? Do we need some action motion today?
It will be posted before, published before next Tuesday's meeting.
Okay.
So we're, we're fine.
Okay. But that doesn't require a formal motion of council to do so. The first reading in and of itself leads to that publishing.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. So any initial beginnings of motions to postpones, they have been eradicated, and everyone's in consensus of that. Hearing no further discussion, that concludes this first reading of the ordinance. And I'm sorry that I stepped out. I was furiously trying to print it for you, but printer didn't like that idea.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes, you have the floor.
Um, is there a motion on the floor or did we?
The motion was for.
Withdraw.
The ordinance. And so that was the earlier motion by Rutherford and James. Carrington was about to make a motion to postpone, but that has been withdrawn. That was my magic wand statement a moment ago. Does that concur that that was withdrawn?
Yes, President.
Okay, good. Hearing no further discussion, that concludes that first reading. And we are now at, is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the agreement for forensic audit services between the city and March Minnick, PC, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement?
I make the motion.
Move. Support.
You hear that? Everybody wanted to make that motion. So I think I heard Goodman seconded by Rutherford.
That's fine.
Because that motion is before us, so the, this council and mayor have provided updates throughout this process, and this is the next more formalized step. Mayor Administration, you have the floor for context for council and the community.
Thank you very much, President McGinnis. I'm going to turn the floor over to Deputy Mayor Stevens.
So, Council President, as you noted, we have had continuous updates on this item, and now you just have the actual contract in front of you to approve.
Thank you. Those that wish to be recognized and speak on the motion before us. This does have a dollar amount attached to it. Do we anticipate in the future or perhaps through the next fiscal year when there are budget amendments that we may need to make to align the resources to, to fund the forensic audit services, or is that still being deliberated through?
Great, great question, Council President. We will eventually need to make a budget amendment to cover the cost of the forensic audit.
Understood. Those that wish to have the floor? President Protem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I like to say that myself, as well as Councilman Brent Nicholson, had, had a great opportunity to sit with the administration and pick in this particular firm. And one of the reasons why this firm was chosen was because it had extensive municipal government experience in providing forensic audit, audits. So I definitely look forward to having this company here in the city of Pontiac. Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? There's a motion and a second. Hearing no motion to postpone, we'll proceed now into voting procedures. This would be adoption of the resolution to approve the agreement for forensic audit services between the city and March Minnick, PC, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. So this is not the first time we've discussed it. It's been through work groups, subcommittees, previous council meetings when we received the, all of the contracts. Thank you all, my colleagues, who worked hard to collaborate with the administration to get us to this point. Hearing no further discussion, we proceed on roll call of adoption of the resolution. Clerk Grandison.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six to zero.
That motion carries. We are now revisiting an item that was postponed from the previous week. It's adoption of a resolution to approve a new position for this fiscal year within the mayor's office, public relations and event specialist, and an annual salary of $50,000. Mayor Administration, you have the floor.
We, as you know, talked about this last week, about the need to have somebody here at City Hall who, on behalf of both the mayor's office, the executive branch, and city council, the legislative branch, is able to interact with the media and the press, and more importantly, promote the city. Try to make sure that we, as a city and as a community, are getting the word out about the great things that do happen here and that we are a great place to come visit, that we're a great place to live, that we're a great place to do business. And right now, there's nobody at City Hall who's really charged with those functions. But this position would also be responsible for helping to bring more events to the city and helping to coordinate and organize events in the city. So this is really an important function. I think all of us here in the city believe that we have a great amount to offer, that we need to get the word out and celebrate all that we have to offer here in the city, but that also we need to do more to hold more signature events downtown and throughout our neighborhoods and really make sure that Pontiac is a destination, especially for our own residents, so that our own residents are staying here and doing things here in the city of Pontiac instead of going to other communities and spending their tax dollars in other communities. And we'd love to bring more people here for events so that people from other communities are spending more of their dollars here, supporting our residents, our tax base, and our businesses, and our local employees. So that's what this position's all about. And obviously, we're, we're just really talking about the remaining three years of the current fiscal year, which ends June 30th. I know that there have been some concerns expressed at the last council meeting that maybe $50,000 is not a sufficient amount, but my hope is that we'll be able to find somebody good in this role. If we start going down this, this application process and we think that we need to come back to city council for a higher salary amount, we can certainly cross that bridge when we come to it. But this is an important position. We're trying to budget for it in a fiscally responsible manner, which is why we're, we're not asking for a higher salary at this time. And we're excited about the prospect of somebody working to make sure that they're promoting all of our interests here in the city.
Thank you. This was moved and seconded at last week's meeting and postponed to allow further deliberation and community feedback. Any one on the council that wishes to speak to the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion, we move now into a roll call vote on adoption of the resolution to approve a new position for fiscal year 2122 within the mayor's office, the public relations and event specialist.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
That's six to zero.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the title change for the new position of community concerns manager to community concerns specialist?
Support.
It's been moved by Goodman, seconded by Rutherford. This is a matter of reconciling what we have discussed at previous meetings. Thank you, Legislative Council Sharp, for helping prepare this for us. Any discussion? We're just aligning what was decided on last week in terms of the position title. Mayor, do you want to speak to that this position has been posted at this point?
Yes, we're, we're very excited about posting this position, about finding a good person to serve in this position. This position is all about making sure that we're hearing concerns, questions, comments, input from residents, and most importantly, that, that we're providing an easy channel for them to provide that feedback and then making sure, novel idea, that our city departments are actually following up and answering those questions and responding to those concerns. So we need somebody here who's going to coordinate that, make sure that that's actually happening, and make sure that residents are getting the timely responses and resolution of their concerns that they deserve. And I couldn't have said it any better than you, President McGinnis, about why this is on the agenda. It's to make sure that we're bringing the title into alignment with what's been discussed at previous city council meetings.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? Hearing no further discussion, we're moving into roll call voting on adoption of the resolution to approve the title change for the new position of community concerns manager to community concerns specialist. Roll call, Clerk Grandison.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six to zero.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to confirm the mayoral reappointments of Maria Bermudez, Dr. Carl Byerly, Irma Hayes, and Judy Wilson for four-year terms to the Arts Commission?
Yes, I make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington. With that motion before us, Mayor Administration, you have the floor for background.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. There are 11 positions on the Arts Commission. However, only four of those positions have actually been filled, and these are the four people who have been in those positions in recent months. The other seven positions have been vacant on the Arts Commission. And vacant positions are positions that I will be filling this week with appointments to the Arts Commission. Appointments, that is to say, first time appointments to the Arts Commission do not require city council approval, and that's why they're not on the agenda tonight. But reappointments, reappointing people who are there, do require council approval. And since we have only four active members of the Arts Commission currently, those are the four people who I've brought forward to the city council for reappointment. We determined that the four of them merit reappointment. They've all been active, they've all been constructive and engaged, and they've all proven their dedication to the purposes and mission of the Arts Commission. The other seven appointments I'll be making in short order. And so if you apply to serve on the Arts Commission and you're not one of these four, that's why, because if you have not been serving on the Arts Commission, you do not need to have your appointment confirmed by city council.
Others, Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
I am just so excited because the Arts Commission is near.
is near and dear to my heart as an artist, and that's the one who has participated in the art crawl in the past. And I can say without a shadow of doubt that all these four people have worked diligently to keep that going. Council President Mike McGinnis used to be over the Arts Commission, and that's how I first got involved with it. And so, now I'm just excited to see these people continuing on the legacy that you built. That's all.
I do want to acknowledge Maria, Carl, Irma, and Judy for your continuing willingness to volunteer for the community and advance and cultivate our arts and culture. These are voluntary roles, and you're doing that on behalf of Pontiac residents and arts advocates in our community. Any further discussion? So, again, for this or any other boards and commissions, if you think, hey, I want to be in the mix with that, the mayor's office does need those applications. So, don't be hesitant, don't be shy for this or for other boards and commissions. Councilwoman Rutherford?
This is a president question for Mayor Grimal. Mr. Grimal, do you know when you're going to be announcing those new people?
By the end of this week, we will be notifying those folks and making those appointments. And so, I will be publicly announcing them at the next public opportunity, which will be next Tuesday's City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. We move into roll call voting on adoption of the resolution to confirm the mayoral reappointments of Maria Bermudez, Dr. Carl Byerly, Irma Hayes, and Judy Wilson for a four-year term to the Arts Commission. Roll call, Clerk Randison.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six to zero.
That motion carries. Congratulations to those community members for your continued leadership on this board and commission. We're now at an item that was postponed from the previous week's meeting. It's the adoption of the resolution to approve zoning map amendment ZMA 22-01 at 788 East Walton Boulevard, parcel identification number 641416226015, from R3 multiple-family dwelling to C3 corridor commercial zoning district. We will be considering this matter tonight, since last week we had presentation and discussion. Any further information that the administration would like to give council before we deliberate further?
We don't have anything to add, unless council has specific questions, in which case, we're happy to answer those. But all of our information that we wanted to present, we presented last week.
Thank you. Those that wish to have the floor. We had excellent debate at last week's meeting, and this also is a recommendation that came before the planning commission, before coming here. I did walk the site this past weekend, was thinking about the questions that my colleague Councilman Parker had asked in terms of traffic implications. So, even setting aside the zoning question, but in terms of future land use, when I was there this weekend, it was actually very beautiful, very peaceful, that as I walked the full site, I didn't even see a single user of the storage facility come in during that half-hour period or so. That's not hard data, but it's just in terms of anecdotal reference, in terms of the volume necessarily, that storage facility. And to that question, we know that the property owner and the existing building owner is here this evening. If you'd like to take the microphone and speak to anything and answer any questions, it was asked last week, sort of the volume or frequency that the current storage facility has, and then once, ultimately, the new development is in place, what that sort of increase in traffic or frequency might have bearing on the flow of traffic on that major thoroughfare. Anything further that you or Mr. Gustafson would like to offer? The opportunity is here.
Yes, actually, the owner of the property is here, Rev. Deeb.
Yes, Rev. Deeb Chera from Canada. Do you need my address again?
No, that's kind of the public hearing requirement, so you did your deed.
Okay, wonderful. Nice to meet you all. Thank you for allowing us to speak again today. Yeah, storage facilities, there's very minimal traffic. My friend, learned colleague, you mentioned that you didn't see many people there. That's kind of how it is. People store it, and they forget it, and they come just very randomly to visit their belongings. So, there is not much traffic involved, and we are with the new additions, adding a secondary entryway to help disperse some of that traffic, if there is some, but we don't anticipate any additional traffic or any issues involving traffic.
What is your estimated date of completion for the project?
It all depends on, once we get full approvals. Once we do, we estimate probably a year to construct. Costs of steel have gone up quite a bit, so once we get the green light, we'll place our orders, and it'll probably take about a year to construct.
And you shared with the planning commission the hours of operation. If you want to share that for the community's benefits, since those questions have been asked?
Yes, absolutely. So, we have multiple facilities in Michigan. This particular facility is only operating from 6:00 in the morning till, I believe, 9:00 PM at night. We limit customers' access to the facility. Previously, it was operating on a 24-hour basis, and there were some issues with break-in. Just you increase the chances or opportunities for issues to pop up when they can access it at the late hours of the night. So, we've limited that so far.
And it was asked last week in terms of the volume or frequency of storage facilities. Certainly in that Walton corridor, we see a great concentration of apartment living. So, people that are living in townhouses, apartments, and condos, that their storage capacity is limited based on their residences, so it certainly tracks on that front. But as we talked about last week, this is a zoning map amendment change that's bringing it in alignment with variances that previous councils have done over the decades. Other questions that council members have on this zoning map amendment? Council Protem Carrington.
Thank you, sir. Just a quick question. So, you say you stay in Canada? I'm assuming.
Yes.
Okay. So, do you have a management firm here that manages that particular facility for you?
Yes, actually, recently, we, you've probably heard of Public Storage, we've actually hired them to manage that facility, which is the biggest player when it comes to storage.
Another thing is, I just wanted to make a statement, because I had a chance to actually drive by it as well, and I was kind of looking to see just how well-kelped it was. And if it wasn't well-kelped, I had planned on to vote against it tonight. So, I actually commend you on making sure that the facility is well-kelped and needed. Thank you entirely.
We take pride in that. Sorry to interrupt. We take pride in that. And like I said, Public Storage, they own the most real estate in the world, believe it or not, not McDonald's or Subway. Public Storage owns the most real estate. So, it actually costs us a lot of money to have them manage the facility for us, but we wanted the best for the community, and we wanted to provide the best services to our customers. So, we decided to contract Public Storage.
All right, thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor. I hope the takeaway is for you that the city council's watching, and the neighbors are watching, but we are grateful for your business and your work and development in the city of Pontiac. We're grateful for you being a good neighbor and helping to not only keep the standard strong, but then grow it, because it'll be a new footprint with this zoning map amendment change. It allows the site plan work to go forward. The residents in that area and those passing through this important corridor, we want to raise the bar. So, we're grateful for your participation in that raising of the bar.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Other further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. We move forward in roll call voting on adoption of the resolution to approve zoning map amendment ZMA 2201 at 788 East Walton Boulevard. It would be going from R3 multiple-family dwelling to C3 corridor commercial zoning district. Roll call, Clerk Randison.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six to zero.
That motion carries. We look forward to updates, Mr. Gustafson, as that progress moves forward. We're now at, is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC Redevelopment Ready Communities Program, and implement recommendations to receive redevelopment-ready communities certification?
I make the motion.
Support.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. So, that motion is before us. Want to give the floor to Mayor and administration for background.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. The presentation, I think, speaks for itself. In my view, this really should be a no-brainer, in that this is a program that certainly doesn't cost the city anything, and is designed to make sure that the city is abiding by best practices when it comes to development and planning methodologies. One of the areas where the speaker noted that the city has fallen short in the past is when it comes to training our planning commissioners and our ZBA members. And it's really important that members of those boards receive proper training, and that has not occurred over the years. And it's one example, among others, where being a part of this program can help us better adhere to best practices to ensure that our planning commission and ZBA members, in this case, have the training they need to best do their jobs.
Thank you. Others that wish to speak to it? Councilwoman Rutherford.
What a difference training makes. I am excited about this. I'm more excited because of the technology part, because we get up-to-date data, we get up-to-date program, and it's all free. That's a good word, isn't it? Free, so I'm excited.
Others that wish to have the floor. This is something that also opens up new doors for funding opportunities. Mr. Gustafson, is there anything you can elaborate on? Maybe something that's pending right now from the state, or in the past, where those that have that redevelopment-ready community classification, it opens other resource pathways?
It does. Thank you, Council President, City Council Mayor, and Deputy Mayor. What it does do, it elevates in regards to not just what Ms. King was referring to in regards of technical assistance, which will be tremendous help, as we're trying to build capacity within planning and various departments and divisions throughout the year and beyond. But also, what it will do is facilitate what those best practices are for that purpose in regards to providing assistance from consultants or internally to guide us in best approaches. I think also what it does do, and as she talked about, the Michigan EDC has these different groupings, these different divisions. And as we know, Alex Borngesser is keeping a very sharp eye on what we call the RAP program. And what that does is in regards to redevelopment-ready type of projects as placemaking, and also from an economic development side. They keep on moving the deadlines and when the applications will come out, but there is significant dollars that will seek that opportunity. We have to be, as part of that program, to be redevelopment-ready. The mayor was nice enough in his first month to sign off on what we call certified local government, which is also part of the Michigan EDC, and SHPO in regards to historic preservation. And that also will provide our HDC the opportunity for technical assistance and monetary funds towards that technical assistance. These type of programs and accreditations are critical, particularly from funding from the Michigan EDC. And then there's other opportunities that Ms. Borngesser and I will be working on as part of that, too, to seek some additional funding and also capacity building within the various divisions. So, it will show those funders that opportunity that we are here. It's important to us. It's vital in regards to be that redevelopment certification. Thank you.
Protem Carrington, then Councilman Goodman, then Councilman James, and then Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. I'm definitely excited about the opportunity, as I listened to the presentation I read earlier concerning community involvement or community engagement. I think that's something that's been lacking, as we roll out a lot of these plans with neighborhoods, and a lot of times, due to only a public hearing that hits four or five houses that's next to the project.
Sure.
The other part of the community doesn't have a chance to time in on exactly what's happening within their community. So, I'm hoping that this department can actually start broadening the horizon, I mean, broaden that net of community engagement, because basically, a lot of times, these projects are fought against or refused, it's because the community just don't know about the projects.
Correct. Very good point.
Thank you.
Very good point. And as in the draft resolution that is included in your packet, I think it's important to note that we've took the initiative, and it's what Councilwoman James had mentioned in regards to that corridor study in regards to West Huron. Here we have an incredible opportunity. I'm working with MSU students that are doing an assessment. They will be probably doing a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threat type of analysis, or a SWOT analysis, that will at least provide us the background studies for something further. And also, as part of that, we also know that West Huron is looking, or is part of Oakland County's Main Street program, calling the Urban Main. And those type of strategies will also dovetail nicely, so we'll have a great booklet of information to dovetail into what we, within city planning and development, will be looking at as regards to further initiatives to really spur on further development within that corridor. So, the timing could not be better from regards to what we're doing right now. Thank you.
Councilman James.
Yes, I'm very excited about the potential to be able to build up our business corridors. District 4 has a number of very nice business corridors, and I would love to see us incorporate placemaking strategies in our business corridors to really upgrade those areas. But she did mention that one of the obstacles we face is that we are, it's time for us to redo our master plan. So, my question is, has there been any conversation about getting that process started?
As a matter of fact, in our planning commission meetings at the end of last year, we did spend quite a bit of time describing how we were going to approach that project, and get it moving and getting it started, yes. So, there is momentum there. It's taking a little bit of time because of our other commitments that we have to deal with right now.
Okay. Well, I would suggest, though, that as we vote to approve going forward with this, that that's probably going to be central to
It is.
this moving forward,
Of course it is.
that you guys move forward with the plan to update the master plan.
Right. And especially right now, I mean, the U.S. Census data is coming out pretty fast and furious from 2020. We're also looking at American Census survey that was done in 2019, which will be helpful data from where we're at right now, and projecting that out into the future. So, that's vital information. Again, it's that perfect storm that's happening with all the information that's becoming available to us and opportunities.
Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Thank you, Council President. Going back to your question that you asked about funding opportunities, completing the RRC process makes projects in the city of Pontiac more competitive when they apply for community redevelopment program funding through the MEDC. So, if you remember, Ms. King talked about there being three different parts of the MEDC. There is the pure Michigan marketing side, there is the business development side, and there's the community development side. So, under the community development side, they have a funding program called CRP, Community Redevelopment Program. And having completed the RRC program makes any applicant who looks for funding through that program a better-scoring applicant.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? When I was reviewing the RAP funding, it looks like that they've released a new finding to say that it is eligible for, because there is matching funds that would be required, that the American Rescue Plan, or the ARPA funding, is an eligible opportunity to be that match. And so, when we're talking about these placemaking, I know Councilman James is very passionate about this, that a lot of our public spaces, our green spaces, that we can really scale up the resources at the federal or the state level.
Correct.
And I'm grateful that this, it'll be hard work, but the work will open up new avenues and opportunities to bring more resources to make our neighborhoods and our community spaces more dynamic. But when it comes to our neighborhoods, when it comes to our corridors, we residents deserve development. We deserve them looking good, looking sharp, and I'm grateful for the foundation that's been laid to do that hard work. And I know there will be a lot more steps that the council and the mayor will have to do together, but this is just one of those steps. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted, and hearing no motion to postpone, we move into roll call voting on adoption of this resolution. Clerk Randison.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Elizabeth... Thank you. Thank you very much. I've, Elizabeth, Elizabeth was asking me, and I said, I guarantee you, I'm, we'll be able to get this through council because of the commitment here in the city of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That motion carries. Thank you, Clerk Grandison. We now arrive at public comment. President Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor?
Yes, and your Spanish is getting better.
You bet.
Mr. Quincy Stewart.
Long way to go, I know.
What's his name? Hebrew?
Yeah.
German?
All right. Tonight, no fancy speeches. No $10 words or lofty analysis. No finger pointing outside sources tonight, though it is crystal clear that racism does bear an extraordinary lofty role in the psychosis of self-destructive behavior in our community. That said, allow me tonight to speak for the thousands in this community who reel in mind-boggling dismay, and fathomless lament, grief, and, yes, anger at the needless murder of little Aria Jackson. Like many of you in the audience and those of you watching by cable, I have an eight-year-old granddaughter. Many of you have young daughters. I see her innocence, how fresh and new she is to life, relatively untainted by the conflagrations and inundations that life on this mortal coil can sometimes bring. And I hope we have not become so anesthetized to these kinds of grotesque atrocities inundated by TV crime shows which make entertainment out of murder, or the constant bombardment of news and evening reporting these daily inhumanities replete with homicides, carjackings, home invasions, and so forth. I hope that an outrageous, deeply tragic death of our beloved children would erode any semblance of nonchalantness. To picture this young girl so full of life in an instant taken from her parents in our community is beyond sobering. I hope we are all uncomfortable. I hope we are incessantly ill at ease and downright disturbed enough to use our indignation at such an act and transform it into an action, actions of love for one another and for our babies. More policing isn't the answer. Tougher sentences may provide small recompense, but does little to thwart acts like these. No, it comes back to the home and the society we live in which glorifies power, emboldens the weak and powerless to seek self-esteem through violence, and a system of Americanism which resolves conflict through bloodshed. We must all rethink and revisit ways to get rid of poverty, to establish and reprioritize initiatives around mental health, economic and social-cultural uplift. But even with all of that, if we have stooped so low as to shoot into cars with children, or anyone else for that matter, that may be futile. When love abounds in the home, therein is our city. When good old-fashioned home training and manners are seen as passe, therein goes the community. When common courtesy, decency, and irreverent, abiding respect for human life has little more sanctity than a video game, no policing, punishment, nor law will save us. Only a reclamation of our culture, our norms and morals, and reduction, and a re-education will make things good and right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chuck Johnson. And on deck, Ms. Catherine Dezereaux.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience, and those of you at home watching by television. My comment this evening would reflect the resolutions that we've been doing for a lot of the folk who's been here and gone on. It was a big part of our city and community. I had an opportunity a few years back to recognize Rosie Richardson, who was the person in the Rosie Riveters that built the stuff in the World Wars and whatever. We did a resolution here at the 10th council. I searched all weekend for another person that I admired. They came here. She was a very prominent lady. She was a member of the Clinton River Trail, the Clinton River Committee of sort. But I tried this weekend to find more information on her. But her name is Bernice Ferguson. And I'm trying to find some information so that I can recognize her at this, at this body. And it's my understanding that the daughter and the granddaughter has already deceased, so I didn't know how to go any further. But this was a very prominent lady. As a matter of fact, when we first got the new type trash cans in the community, Willie Payne was the mayor at the time, and he, he called on Ms. Ferguson to show the public how easily it would be to move these trash cans from the backyard to the front. And we admired her for that, because she always, she always was adamant about saying that, I think she was 80 years old or something at the time, or whatever, but she wasn't afraid to make mention of her, her age. We knew that she was a senior in the room, and we knew that she was a senior in the city. And it's, it's my, it's going to be my pleasure to, to gather some information. If anybody can help me out with that, her name is Bernice Ferguson. And I'd love to recognize her at this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I've just got some details to clean up tonight. I was chastised because I had asked about the Phoenix Center tatters and not publicly thanked the mayor. I did thank him in person, for those who thought I was being rude. And it does look so much better. Second of all, I wanted to thank the DPW. There was a gigantic hole by public storage on Walton Boulevard, which has been cold patched, and we're not dropping into it or having to take over the middle lane in order to get around it. And also, there's been some patching done on Pike. You know, it's not perfect, but it's certainly better than it was a week ago, and for which we are grateful. My main point tonight is, is a little off-topic. It's come to my attention that we have several children in our special ed program, young children, who are nonverbal. And we do not have, what do they call them? Boardmakers. There's a newer program out now called VOX. But these are programs that the children can point to the word, they can point to the picture. It makes them able to communicate without having to learn sign language at that young age. They all know more, and food and all of that. But they need this program. They need the materials. And if there's some business out there that's looking for a place who puts some money, talk to the people involved, and let's get some of this material, because these kids need it desperately. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Ann Bowie. And then Mr. Bill Maxey after that.
Sorry for the delay, but good evening, Council President, the mayor, council members, and community. The resolution I'm about to read here tonight is from the New Pontiac Urban Institute League, Michigan Senior Advisory Council, State of Michigan. To the city of Pontiac, administrative and legislative council, whereas the Pontiac Urban Institute League go on record as identifying two Americas, one white and America and one black, one black. The new resolution to the city of Pontiac, from the New Pontiac Urban Institute League of Michigan, Senior Advisory Council, State of Michigan, whereas the Pontiac Urban Institute League go on record as identifying two Americas, one white and one black, and I think, I hope I didn't repeat myself, because I have this, and it's, this nation, in fact, is not one nation under God, God with a liberty and justice for all, as written in the U.S. Constitution. Whereas, based on the preamble of the nation constitution, introductory statement is not living up to its purpose, aim, and justification. Whereas, based on the preamble of the nation constitution, introductory statement is not living up to its purpose, aim, and justification. Whereas, based on the preamble of the nation, land, of the free, and the home of the brave, liberty and equal justice for all, and essence only for thought. Whereas, Pontiac Urban Institute League go on record as stating, this is American design, no liberty and justice for Black America. Whereas, the Pontiac Urban Institute League go on record as Black America not accepting white America's social justice or criminal justice. Whereas, the Urban Institute do not accept the present environment of absent ears, no present at the table in terms of implementing our community to resolve our community challenges. And then, whereas, the Urban Institute go on record as having an agenda inclusive of and positive agenda with impact initiative at the community table with level of quantitative and quality outcomes.
Ma'am, that concludes your time.
Oh, sorry. Hubert Bill Maxey, President, Mary Ann Bowie, Vice President. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bill Maxey?
Good afternoon, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, community at large, and governance. I had planned on another point, give some important information on some developments at, for the veterans, and developments for senior, not imports, but extra things that the senior would need, perks. But I had to change. I'm going to quickly reflect on the conversation. I called it debacle last week between our voting citizens and a sitting meeting of the council. This is addressed because I am the chairperson and the president of New Urban Development, New Urban League, under the same auspices, the guidance of the Urban League all over America, criminal justice, economic justice, development, and education. To Mr. Brett, your remarks last week is not countable. You should have the expertise, expression and skills, if you're disappointed, if you disagree, to not inflame. Citizens think like this. Many of them think, I'm right, you're wrong. But this comes from not knowing your community. If you know your community, then you will know how to express yourself and not have this inflame. Between 3,000 and 5,000 people saw this, which reflected back to some parts of the old administration. Secondly, you know, when you're in that seat, that seat is not yours, or any councilman up there. You are voted into sit. When we citizens come up and talk, congratulate, or make complaints, we go home. But by the voting power, we place you in that seat to have the proper conduct, to have the proper inspection. President McGinnis, if I had said anything derogatory, abusive, or whatever, the police would have been called. I would have been handcuffed. If I didn't go willingly, I would have been removed. But you sat in that seat, and your decision to let him talk is very inappropriate and unacceptable. I hope I don't have to come up again and say this, because you really took things away from me tonight, as I have a lot of perks and a lot of information for our youth, our seniors, and a new program with the extra vendors. So in the future, take note. Don't, please don't do that again. We don't accept this. It is not his freedom of speech, the seat he sits in, the seat all of you sit in, because of the vote of the citizens. And as I said, many of them think, well, I'm right, I'm always right, you're wrong. But if you've got skills, and you know how to express yourself, this would not have happened. Please, you know, take this as a recommendation, as a recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gloria Miller?
Good evening. First, I want, my time is going to go fast, and I've got so much in my mind. First, I want to give a condolences to Anaya. And I want to say this as a speaking person that has walked it and lived it. Anaya, there are people in the community that want to talk, but they don't talk, and they're afraid they'll get killed. And I don't blame them. When I was on council, over on the east side, over by northern, it was so bad over there, his people couldn't come out of their house. And I said that to say this. When I was growing up in the city of Pontiac, because most of everybody here family me. See, that's one thing about Pontiac, you can't lie about nothing, because everybody know your business. Everybody know your business. They know your business. And we can't come down here and perpetrate. When I sat on the other side, I always kept saying, that's just a seat for me. Over there, I worked for them. On this side, I worked with them. And I'll probably be the first council ain't going nowhere. So get used to me. With that being said, Mr. McGinnis, what you did last week was unconscionable. As a Black woman, 24 years, I had to pick up how many years I've been coming down here. I have worked my butt off for this city. I have walked from one end to the other. I don't just know district five, I know all districts. And what Mr. Brett said about me publicly, I am a former elected official. You may not like me, but you're going to respect me. Because when I come down here and speak, I'm speaking for other people. No matter what happens, I got a base. Believe that. I've been here a long time. And most of you don't know nothing about Pontiac when I was out there walking. To bring it where it's at today, when emergency manual here, when they took everything from the city. I done walked the walk. I deserve the respect. And I'm not going to take it from Brett Nicholson or no one for that matter there. I know the citizens. I know the need. And Mr. Parker, they're calling me. They need you. There's some holes over by Carrington School. They need to be patched. I told them, not going to do your job, you elected to do that. But I will bring this message. They want you to give out your phone number. They can't reach you. I don't know it. I tell them on the internet, but you may want to announce it. That, actually, they go for all council members. You got to put your phone numbers out there, because everybody don't watch cable. And it's when they do, and then all this stuff about the leads got to come out, and the landfill, you got to get that out to the citizen. You got to walk it. See, I done did this stuff. And I am not, I wish he was here today, because I wanted to. And Mike, I'm very disgusted. I've said absolutely nothing to him to bring, to say my name. And I wanted to say to him publicly, don't say my name again. Anybody know me, know that I mean what I'm saying. I say what I mean. Also, I wanted to, I mentioned one more thing. I asked for Anaya. My prayers are going to her family. But the reason people don't say anything, if I know where the drug dealers at, you know where they at. That mean the police know where they at. We got to tell the truth, we're out here. That's what I'm going to do. I didn't come down here to make friends. I come to work for the constituent. That's a lot of the problem, too.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Jasper. And then Ms. Gloria Hurson Span on deck.
Thank you, guys. Council, mayor, deputy mayor, nice to meet you, see you again. Sorry I missed you last week. I was in a mission statement for my church, and I wanted to go in there and just find out where I wanted to go with this project, and whether or not I was going to move forward. Message was, don't be the rabbit, be the tortoise. Keep marching until you get the job done. With that being said, I want to agree with Gloria here. I've known her for the last couple of years. She always tells the honest truth. You may not like the fact that she has passion, or the way she says it, but she never lies to you. She always follows through. That said, That said, I've talked with the mayor, I've sent the council information on the global settlement agreement. It's come to my attention that there's been a shipload of documents that were left with the ex-mayor. I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that I'm not looking to sue the city. The idea would be to partner with the city, to sue the partnership, which to this day, nobody's given an answer, who's on that partnership. With the global settlement agreement and the resolutions that were put together last year, PIP, Pontiac Investment Properties, is owned by Stevens. He's one of the partners. Now, it's kind of funny since he was a seller. But a lot of people don't like that. This is their taxpayer dollars. The reason I came down here is that if we came together, tortuous interference, you know what the ex-mayor did. She didn't follow any rules in the charter. She didn't follow through with the RFP. She, I was at the Phoenix Center for a walkthrough and they didn't show. They didn't answer any of my messages, they didn't answer any of my phone calls. I came to the city, they didn't answer email, nothing. Gibb, I worked with in Oakland County on Bloomfield Park, you guys lost the 425 agreement, which gave you 2% on that property. It no longer exists, you never get any taxes from that. You've got $40 million here that's lost taxpayer dollars. The little city project would give everybody what they want, preference to job development, education and military style, hands-on. It would provide economic growth for the city and we would bring in all the contractors and all the people from Pontiac to work on that site. $50 million project would do a lot for the city. Right now, you got hyperinflation, gas prices and stagnation coming in. We need to do something different. I beg you to go to my website, littl cities.net, read through it. It's a people's network. It's a digital service, it's something we can do that's different in this city. And it will make a difference, but we have to get rid of the attorneys because the attorneys hid all that information. You're telling me they don't have a copy of the documents and you can't get a hold of them? Why is that? So go there, there's my phone number. If you have any comments or anything else you want to add to it, let me know. I'm going to have a petition put together and have the people sign it so the mayor and the council follow us through on this, so we can do something for the people instead of against the people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gloria Hurston Span. Then Billy Swazer on deck.
Good evening to the deputy, to the mayor, the deputy mayor and citizens, council. I am Gloria Hurston Span. There are a lot of Glorias, but I'm president of the Pontiac Democratic Club here. I wanted to personally come and thank you for coming out with our meeting week to the governor who came to Pontiac last week. Also, I want to say a special thank you to our representative Brenda Carter, who asked the governor to come to Pontiac. Those of you who weren't there, we were very pleased and we want to thank Local 653 for letting us hold the event there. For those Democrats here in Pontiac, we want you to join the club, come and help us with it. Pontiac Democratic Club is back. We're here to do anything for, to help this city. This is something that is dear to my heart. I don't get up here to talk just to be talking, only if something is important. And I do watch what's going on in this city and you know I will tell you the truth. For those, I am so proud that who've been elected, the new council people, I'm very proud of you. Do what needs to be done for this city. Again, thank you so much and to Brenda Carter and to the governor for coming to our unique city in Pontiac. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. It's Billy Swazer.
Good afternoon. I'm Billy Swazer. I'm a member of the GRS board, also on the SEPA board, and I want to tell you what I think is a conflict of interest. Claudia Philla is over the VIBA. She's also on the SEPA as the president. And I can't see how you cannot have a conflict of interest when you have a SEPA president going to dictate to the VIBA and the VIBA going to dictate to the city. But you know, hey, it all will work itself out, I guess. One of the things I heard about the meeting today was the assets could be distributed from the escrow account unless all the, could not be distributed from the escrow account unless all the parties agree. But the SEPA's attorneys, which they had two, they said everybody could come with one, objected to that. And now we're going to share how that can be incorporated to the ordinance. I will ask you for a copy after this of how it can be. That GRS money is trust fund money. It can't just go everywhere, anywhere. It's trust fund money and it has to be taken care of in a very precise way, otherwise it becomes taxable. And if the whole trust becomes taxable, all the people who will get or can get any money will be taxed. So it doesn't matter to the attorneys how much is getting, going to get taxed, it just matters to us little retirees, who's going to get, going to have that nice tax bill, how much you going to get taxed. One of the things is that I'm going to look into is how you can transfer the old, from the money from old GRS to new GRS. Both of those are trust funds, public trust funds for pensions. And you can, if you could transfer from old GRS to VIBA and to new GRS, then it could be transferred from new GRS to somewhere else, long as it's done with the IRS via approval. I just don't understand how we have this disagreement for so long, other than that Claudia wants different kind of money. Now, the settlement agreement gives you one thing, and as many of you know, I was a past president of the, one of the city's unions. When we finished the contract, the contract was finished. You get up, shake your hands and go back to work. Claudia seems to think that she gets an agreement, there's some clause in there, and I will be talking to her tomorrow when we have a meeting, to see how she interprets the, her attorney interprets the thing that says she can get more money. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. That concludes our public comment. President McGinnis.
Thank you, community members. We are now at closing comments for mayor, clerk and council. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I want to again encourage people to come out to the town hall forum tomorrow, Wednesday evening, from 6 o'clock to 7:30 PM at the Bowen Center. I'm not going to get into all the details, I know I spoke extensively about it earlier. Similarly, I'm not going to be redundant about my comments that I shared earlier this evening about Friday's horrible and tragic events. I do just want to say, and I know others have said it, I know I said it earlier, but I want to underscore and emphasize, we've got to translate this, this sense of mourning that we have now, this sense of anger that we have now, into action moving forward. It doesn't do any good for all of us to talk about how upset we are, to talk about how angry we are, unless we translate that into action moving forward. And all of us sharing the responsibility to do exactly that.
Thank you. Clerk Grandison, you have the floor.
Uh, no closing comments, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford, District 1, you have the floor.
Good evening. Let's try it again. Good evening. All right. Let me fix my mic, I got three minutes and I just said. Respect is not given, it's earned. I absolutely love the word respect. I use it all the time. One of my favorite songs by Reek Franklin was "Respect." Respect is something that you give to people when they respect you and you can respectfully disagree, but what you cannot do is bully, lie and mislabel. That doesn't work. That's not how we going to get the city to change. And I understand people don't want to say, why, people don't understand, why are you talking about this in this three minutes? Well, I think we need to remind people that we are about the business of the city of Pontiac. The business. And business is tough and emotions are felt, but at the end of the day, respect is earned, not freely given. I respect all my elders, but I don't respect anybody who don't respect me. And I will not respect anybody who doesn't respect this council. Because at the end of the day, we are here to serve the people, not ourselves, not our egos, but the higher good, which is the community. On another note, I had an amazing time at the CDC with Mr. Robert Bass. We talked about all those community engagements and community empowerments, and I think it's important that we gaze onto the future, which has to be positive. Like it, live it or love it, but you must, you will, respect it. Have a great evening.
Councilman Mikhail Goodman, District 3, your closing comments.
So I'm going to start this off with a quote, and there will be multiple quotes from the same person in the same, in the same closing comment. We live in a society of imposed forgetfulness, a society that depends on public amnesia. Every time I hear about a child being killed in our city, my heart drops knowing that it could have been one of my former students, one of my classmates, one of my former classmates, siblings. It, it, it takes me every time, especially having lived in the city of Pontiac, having lived in what many people consider to be the hood on the east side, grew up in what I still call the Riverside. Every time we have this conversation around gun control, around crime, we acknowledge the tragedy and we never acknowledge the root cause of it, at least not in action. We are, we get our community rallied together for an always worthwhile cause of justice and love for our community, for our people. However, we are yet to give the people a solution to get to the root of the crisis. Tough on crime has had a profound and detrimental, profound detrimental and outright destructive effect on black and brown communities. Simply throwing people in a cell does not solve the problem that we are facing. Imprisonment has become the response of first resort for far too many of our social problems. When we have this conversation, because it is a tragedy, honestly, it is a tragedy that a seven-year-old has unfortunately, is no longer here because of what we are facing. But the, the, this problem is not simply crime. Crime does not begin and end when the action is perpetrated. It are the things that come before and after, the causes that led to crime, which as many people have pointed out, can be anything from a lack of resources, poverty, all the many things that make up a human being up until that point. But also we have to have a conversation around restorative justice after that point. How do we rebuild not only the people affected by this, but the community as a whole? How do we solve the issue long-term? And do I have the answers to this? No. I, I, I don't think any of us right now have all the answers to the problem that we're facing, but I know the answer is not perpetuating the same cycle that we currently find ourselves in. The last quote that I want to throw out here is that prisons do not disappear social problems, they disappear human beings. Homelessness, unemployment, drug addiction, mental illness and illiteracy are only the few of the problems that disappear from public view when the human beings contending with them are relegated to cages. We have to do more and the answer is simply not, how do we become tough on crime? It's how do we solve the issues that got us here in the first place? To close it up, the Community Engagement and Operations Subcommittee meeting is this Friday at 4:00 in the council legislative meeting room. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kathleen James, District 4, your closing comments.
Good evening, everyone. A lot has been said about the incident that took place on Friday. I don't think there's anything more that I could add. I really liked Pastor Parker's comment about that we as a community have to make a decision on whether we want to be a silent community or a safe community. I think that was an awesome statement and awesome observation because it really does, as, as everyone has said, it does come down to us as a community and what we are willing to continue to tolerate. We have to take responsibility for what's happening in our community. And, you know, in order to do that, we've got to be honest about what we are tolerating. Because when you really look at our society, we're tolerating things that we really should not be tolerating. We have allowed things to become okay that are not okay. And until we recognize it and until we take responsibility, you know, oh, the police got him, you know, that he, that's not the whole of it. That's not the whole of it. Because what's driving it is the fact that we are tolerating too much. And so we've got to work on, on this thing and I appreciate our mayor for taking the leadership, taking the ownership and, and acknowledging that we've got to go beyond the, the meeting that we're going to have, the, what do you call it?
Town Hall.
The town halls. We, we have got to get beyond the town halls and we have got to get to solutions. What are the solutions? And we've got to be able to put, you know, the comment in the resolution for Ms. Peterson, her favorite saying that, you know, there's, it's unbelievable what you can get accomplished when you're not worried about who's going to get the credit. We got a problem with that in Pontiac. We, we've got a, a problem with, everybody wants to get credit, but I'll tell you, you know what? There's enough credit to go around. Let's get something done. And when, and when we get it done, let's divvy up the credit. I'm sure there's going to be an overflow of credit, but let's, let's get something done here. I am so tired of being tired. And I'm tired of watching our children be buried. I'm tired of watching our sons handcuffed and going to prison for the rest of their lives because we can't get it together. And it, and it's us. It's us. And so we, we've got to move, we've got to get something done, we got to deal with reality, deal with ourselves, and I, I believe we can do that. But you know what? It's going to take a different attitude with us. Everybody's mad with there, you got something to say about everything? Give me a break. We have got to learn how to talk to each other and work things out. What happened last week at this council meeting was uncalled for because it, it set the example to people who are looking that even at the seat of government, we can't control ourselves. That's not, that's not the message that you want to send to the community. We need to be examples of being able to set that standard of that we can control ourselves, we can work through problems. People should be able to say what they want to say without enough anger being generated that you want to, come on. Come on, we're all adults. So, uh, those are my closing comments tonight. I have some other things, but as far as potholes in the city, the city's doing a great job trying to work with these things. If you still see potholes as the chairperson for the Parks Recreation-
Order in the chambers. And public- Very, very courteous, order in the chambers.
As chairperson of the Parks Recreation and Public Works Committee, please continue to report those issues to your councilperson. But the, the DPW department is doing a great job trying to address those issues as they come through. That's all I've got, thank you.
Councilman William Parker Jr., District 5.
Thank you. Good evening, Pontiac. Oh, give thanks unto the Lord, for he is good and his mercy endureth forever. Before I go any further, I want to extend my prayers and condolences to our mayor emeritus, Mayor Waterman, for the loss of her mother. As I said, our prayers and condolences go with her as she, because we all, some of us know what it feels like to lose a mother. And so I want to keep her in our prayers. Certainly the, the young lady who, who was, who was shot Friday, our prayers and condolences go out to that. And it's been enough said, so I won't go prolong that any longer. But I do want to just, just say to everybody, and to Sister Miller, I certainly want to thank her because every time she comes, she gives me a little bit more stuff that I need to go take a look at and make sure that it's being handled appropriately. And to her point, I have, I drove by Harrington Hills and I just Harrington School and Harrington Bay Street in general, and I do know that the city did some repair, they just didn't do all the repair. And that seems to be what's going on with a lot of our strities. They are in areas patching what they've been told about, but they won't drive the 20 feet down the street and get the other piece. And so I pray that as we go through that, that we'll remember that there's a piece that we tell you about, but if you go 20 or 50 feet farther, you'll find some other stuff that needs to be taken care of. that needs to be taken care of and grab that while you're there. But I can also say, having driven through most of my district in the last week or so, that I know for a fact, y'all, they did a great job of patching Giddings Road. I watched them while they did it. And I can tell you right now, it looked like they didn't do nothing to it. Don't know what happened. Stuff just seemed to fly out the holes and now it's back like it was. As a matter of fact, not only is it back like it was, there's a hump in it now, so it seemed to be even worse. And that's not because of what the guys did. The guys did their job. I don't know what happened. It just all popped back out. And so, I know that as we are addressing the pothole issue, every street probably in Pontiac has a pothole. You're not going, everybody's not going to get their pothole done today, tomorrow, probably not next week, but they are working on them diligently. And oh, by the way, some of them that they've worked on, it happened back again because guess what? It snowed and some of the stuff got pulled out from the last snow and we got to go back and do it again. Please be understanding of that and be lenient as the city goes through trying to repair those things that need to be repaired. I want to say congratulations to Bishop Murphy for the reopening, the reopening of his sanctuary up at New Mount Moriah. I want to say congratulations to Pastor Rodney Talbert. He celebrated three years of church anniversary at Liberty Missionary Baptist Church. I want to say thank you to the mayor and his administrative team for all that they do to try to move this city forward. And so, for those of you who are saying that you cannot reach me, I guarantee you, if you call City Hall, they know how to reach me. You can call City Hall. You can call the City Hall number, 248-758-3019. If you don't want to get on the phone, you can go to parkerforponiac.com. That's on Facebook. Parker for Pontiac. You can see what else, because I post everything on that website that you need to see. You can go there. But if you can't, then do like some people do. I'm usually here somewhere between 2:00 and 4:00 every day. Amen. I'm usually somewhere between 2:00 and 4:00 every day. If you want to come by, I certainly will hear you. If you don't, if you can't find me, I'll tell you two days, you can, exactly where you can find me. On Wednesday, between 6:30 and 8:00, you can find me at New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church, where I teach and preach the gospel and the Bible study. If you don't find me there, you can find me every Sunday morning from 9:00 to about 2:00 in the afternoon at the New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church, 124 Prospect, I'm sorry, yeah, Prospect Avenue. I'm there. So, if you're literally looking for me, I'm not hard to find. Amen, somebody. I know where I am. And so, I close with that. If you, I certainly want to appreciate all of our council members as we talk about the issue that took place last week. Enough said. We know that there were some things that was inappropriate and we all are learning and we all can get better on how we do treat one another. Amen. And so, as we move forward, let's remember that every, God gives us learning opportunities and teachable moments. Last week was a teachable moment for some of us, and we need to learn from our teachable moments. But we also need to learn that as we are being taught, that we need to control ourselves as well. Each, each, every one of us, as I often tell my congregation, each and every one of us walk around with two pills in our hand, one with water and one with gasoline. You're going to decide when you come to a fire, whether you're going to throw the gasoline on it or throw the water on it to put it out. Good evening, Pontiac.
Council President William A. Carrington, District 6, your closing comments.
Actually, now, I don't know what to say. But, but serious, um, there's a lot said tonight and equalling a lot of my colleagues. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Concerning last week, there's a saying that, what is your strength in the ability to fade back? So, again, what is your strength and ability to fade back? What that means is sometime, we have opportunity to take a step back so we can understand the situation better. So, a lot of times, even when I get in confrontation, I think about that. I have the ability and the strength to fade back. Instead of exciting the situation, someone has to be big enough to fade back. And this is not only about anyone that was involved last week, but I'm also saying that as a community, and you see us in a community, we have all these disputes, and it ends up in tragedies because no one has the ability or strength to fade back. And as adults in our community, as those that are engaged in what's happening in our community, we need to definitely teach others the ability to fade back. So, that's what I'm going to say about last week's situation. But this past week, I was at my father's bedside and I got a call concerning a shooting of a young lady. And that really troubled me as I sit there talking to my father, who's also, we trying to make sure we comfort him as he's going through the process of going through his, his final days here on his plane. And it, and, and I, and I spoke with him and he's, he said, she's, he was like a seven-year-old. I said, yes, yes, sir. A seven-year-old lost her lives in this, in our city. So, we talked about the focus of, of, has to be on a collective work and responsibility. So, we can counter the self-hate and the self-destruction that's internally in our communities, not just the city of Pontiac, but Detroit, Flint, and across this nation. We have a community of self-hate and destruction. So, until every, it's everyone's responsibility, every citizen, every activist, every elected official, and those that are not engaged to get engaged. No one has a right to not, not, not go into work right now. Everyone has to get involved in our community. We have to work together in a cooperative manner to strengthen our families, understand that the well-being of our families is connected to the well-being of our neighborhoods. And the well-being of our neighborhoods is connected to the well-being of the city of Pontiac. And until we understand this, we're going to continue, we continue to fade. Amen. And once we understand this, we can rise, if we can rise, if we continue to rise in the city of Pontiac.
Good evening. Buenos noches. I'm Mike McGinnis, Pontiac City Council President and District 7's representative. I want to share that General Motors is hiring 100 material workers for their Lake Orion facility. You can imply, apply in person at 4555 Giddings Road in Lake Orion, just north of Auburn Hills and not far from our city limits, this Wednesday, March 23rd, between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. So, it's actually really just drop in in-person hiring opportunities and benefits start immediately. Want, want to get that word out. Mackenzie Scott, who I believe is the ex-wife of Jeff Bezos and made a lot of money through their divorce, she is donating $436 million to Habitat for Humanity International and 84 U.S. affiliates. One of those affiliates is Habitat for Humanity of Oakland County, which is receiving $5 million. So, congratulations to them, and we look forward to partnering with them for Pontiac to be a very proactive and eager partner for the innovative ways that can benefit and tackle housing challenges that we have in the Pontiac community. The question was asked this evening. Agenda address is for two minutes, and the previous council also had them for two minutes as well. I can't speak to previous council rules. We could probably do some research on that front, but we maintained the two minutes. And each January, the council will review and revisit our rules and procedures to see how we can make them stronger, adjust accordingly, and make the meetings work well for you and make the meetings work well for the city's business. As Councilwoman Rutherford said, we're about the city's business, trying to do that effectively and efficiently for you, for your neighborhoods, for the concerns that are coming before us. Because if we descend into disorder, it does no one good. And so, as you've likely seen, we've spent a lot of time working to be orderly, effective and efficient, and we'll continue doing that, doing that. It was asked about lawn bag collection. My understanding is that starts April 1st, no fooling, so Friday, April 1st, and then every, you know, trash cycle from there. Each household can put up to 10 lawn, lawn refuse bags. So, don't be shy. Let's keep cleaning up our neighborhoods, your yards, the, the lands that we love here in Pontiac. And free landfill days in our community is April 23rd, April 30th, May 7th. I want to again acknowledge the Pontiac Transportation Museum and their volunteer Renee Voight-Porath for their work and partnership on the Women's History Month display in the main floor of City Hall. We are celebrating the birthday of William A. Carrington. So, there is cake that follows this meeting afterward. That's the reward for sticking through it. Thank you to the family of Ruth Peterson and the staff of Ruth Peterson Senior Center for the work that you did. Thank you, Bishop Gibson, for delivering this evening's invocation. Thank you all for invested your time in building a stronger Pontiac. God bless you. Good night. Is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Simpson and James, seconded by James. Hearing notice discussion, roll call and adjournment. Clerk Randerson.
McGinnis?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Parker? Excuse us, we haven't dismissed yet. Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
That motion carries, and want to acknowledge that Clerk Garland-Toyle is at estate training for a clerk, so we, we salute him in absence.